Let's get started. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for November 12th, 2025. Please note the meeting rules at the poster of the entrance. They're also posted online. Please no jeering, cheering, clapping, stomping, etc. Anything that's going to make somebody with a different viewpoint than you feel uncomfortable in any way. We want to make sure that this is an open discussion for all perspectives. If you'd like to speak to a topic, you can fill out a comment card that are posted at the door and pass it to one of the commissioners on the end here, and then when your item comes up, we'll discuss it. And then just a comment, anything that was submitted before noon on Wednesday has been put into the public record, and we have all reviewed those comments. All right, we're gonna wait just for a second for Commissioner Leverett to sit down before taking role, so that he can be counted in the role. And that role will be facilitated by staff.
When I call your name, please say here. Amy Berry.
Here.
Amy Burrows.
Here.
Landon Krasik.
Here.
Richard Leverett. Lila Rosenfield.
Here.
Brian Scott.
Here.
Mike Vayler.
Here.
We have seven commissioners in attendance and a full corps.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, now it is time for the report of the Chair and the Vice Chair, and I have nothing to report.
Nope, nothing.
Nothing to report. Okay, moving on to the report of the Director.
Good evening, Commission. I just have one quick thing to report. We published the update to the Northwest Community Plan a couple weeks ago. We will be having the first public hearing in December on that plan with no intended recommendation, just a first public hearing so we can get feedback from the community as well as the Commission, and then we'd come back in a future date in 2026. I encourage all of you, if interested, please take a look at the plan and provide early comments if you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now it is time for open forum. This is a time for the Commission to discuss land use, general land use items not listed on the agenda. This discussion will be limited to 10 minutes. So are there any comments from commissioners on staff that are not associated with this agenda?
I have a comment, if it's all right, Mr. Chair.
Great. And then I also, we've got another comment from you, right? Okay, so let's try to spend a few minutes on both.
Okay.
Okay.
During our last session, as part of the debate over the Sugar House Hotel, Commissioner Berry rightly called me out for stating that many of those speaking in opposition to the project were doing so out of a fear of change, and for describing that change, that fear, as silly. Those parts of my speech were wrong for two reasons. First, I do believe that fear of change, fear of newness, fear of the other, is often profoundly harmful, corrosive to the human spirit, and damaging to our communities. It is also deeply embedded in human psychology, including my own. To dismiss it as silly, and by implication somehow irrelevant, diminishes the actual harm it does, and the genuine feeling of those experiencing it. The other aspect of my statement that was incorrect is more factual. Commissioner Berry correctly noted that Sugar House has faced more change in the past 20 years than possibly any other community in our city. By saying what I did, I erased the fact that Sugar House has done more than any other to welcome new neighbors, more to welcome new neighbors than basically anywhere else in Salt Lake City. The aplomb with which the community has handled this change is genuinely impressive, and deserves better than being dismissed by a planning commissioner from Central City. In the future, I will work to be more cautious with my comments as I passionately advocate for the growing city that we all deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate you taking the time to acknowledge something that you said. Appreciate that.
Just a couple of comments, and these don't, these comments don't have anything to do with with the issues that are before us this evening. I just, I'll just start off by saying, you know, I understand that there's a critical need for housing. I understand it. I espouse it. I agree with it. I support it. But I will say that I think I can do better, and I think perhaps as a commission, we can do better. When I think of neighborhoods, and everyone has their own image of what neighborhoods are to everyone, but I think of porches, I think of people that are walking, being able to see and meet your neighbor, see young couples walking in strollers with their little ones, places where you can sit and talk and play and interact with your neighbors. Some of the, some of the cases or the issues that have come before us are, you know, hundreds of feet long with canyon-like developments that are, you know, two, three stories and such, and I don't see, I don't see neighborhood and some of these that are side by side. I see that views from living rooms and bedrooms are looking into living rooms and bedrooms. So I just question ourselves if we as a commission aren't pushing for enough horizontal and vertical relief, that we have a bit more landscaping relief, places where we can sit and play under shade, you know, for real, that break up the monotony of these long buildings. And I just question as a commission if we're not, you know, how do I put this? If we're not trying to fit 11 pounds into a 10-pound sack sometimes, and perhaps only nine pounds would still be economically viable, and give that horizontal and vertical relief that is necessary, because we are trying to create neighborhoods and thinking ahead 20, 30 years, are these, these small communities that we're helping to foster, do they really have a sense of neighborhood? And then the last point is just, just a point of information. Fire trucks cannot back up more than 150 feet. If there's a dead end, it has to have a cul-de-sac, a hammerhead, or some other arrangement so that a truck that is, you know, 50, 60 feet long can turn around. The, you know, the road has to be stable enough and stuff, but it's just some of these that we have seen, I think we perhaps give the folks that come before us a false sense that it's approved. When I know that it gets to the plan check, those kinds of things will come in and it'll change their plans. So just for our knowledge, 150 feet is all that a fire truck can go into as a dead end. More than that, there has to be the cul-de-sac, the turnaround, or a loop road kind of thing. That's all I had. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do you have anything that you would like the staff to research regarding the relief or anything that you were, the vertical and horizontal relief?
I have had some preliminary conversations with both Nick and with Michaela, and I think I need to do a little bit more. But I think what we're seeing more often than not is inches rather than feet, and true, true changes. I acknowledge that so many of the plans that come before us are different materials, first floor, second floor, you know, that, or different buildings. I get that, and I think that's in the right direction. But I still think that looking at a 150-foot building feels very, very monolithic, and there's not enough push and pull, shade and shadow, to make things feel a bit different along that long length. And I think that that would be beneficial.
Cool.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. That, are there any other comments from the Commission in the open forum? Okay, we will move forward. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. These are items that are generally expected to have little discussion, and there is no public comment associated with any of these items. So depending on how the Commission feels, we might move quickly through them. Those items are an extension request for a plan development at 602 and 212 East, 300 South, an extension request for plan development and design review at approximately 1518 South, 300 West, an extension request for a design review for approximately 850 West, 100 South, and the fourth item is the October 22nd meeting minutes. Are there any commissioners? I'm looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
Excuse me. I can make a motion on the consent agenda for the items that you talked about, including the many minutes.
Perfect.
I would motion that they be approved.
Okay, we have a motion for approval for the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, great. We have a first and we have a second. Voting will be facilitated by staff.
Amy Berry.
Yes.
Amy Burrows.
No.
Landon Krasik.
Yes.
Richard Leverett.
Yes.
Lila Rosenfield.
Yes.
Brian Scott.
Yes.
Mike Vayler.
Yes.
That motion passed.
All right, now we have, we've completed the consent agenda. We will now be moving on to the regular agenda, starting with a rezone at approximately 2260 and east 1300 South. We'll start with a presentation by staff, followed by a presentation by the development group.
Okay, good evening, Commission. Just one moment. Okay, this is a zoning map amendment or request for the properties of 2260, 2270, oh, I'm so sorry. I thought I exited already. Okay, thank you. So, so this is for the properties at 2260, 2270, and 2290 East, 1300 South. J Development LLC is requesting approval to rezone the properties from R17,000 Single Family Residential to MU3 Mixed Use District 3. The subject properties contain three occupied single-family dwellings, and the rezone is intended to allow for a portion of a 26-unit residential development, which would include approximately eight townhomes and 18 condos. 10% of the units are proposed to be set aside as affordable units for buyers who meet 80% of the area median income as the proposed community benefit. And staff is recommending the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval with conditions. To give you a quick overview of the details, if the request is approved, the applicant intends to apply for a lot consolidation to combine the properties with the property directly south, which consists of a surface parking area. That area is outlined in yellow. The applicant intends to construct approximately 12 residential units on the subject properties, including eight townhomes, and three to four condo units consisting of a mix of two to three bedrooms. The applicant provided conceptual renderings to illustrate the intent of the proposal. However, the visuals provided are not final development plans, and the Planning Commission will only consider the proposed zoning change and associated community benefits. And just for some brief history, in 2023, a previous property owner submitted a petition to rezone the same properties from R17,000 to Community Business, which is now MU3. The Planning Commission reviewed their request and recommended approval to the City Council. The petition was ultimately denied by the City Council as it did not include a community benefit specifically related to the development of affordable housing. The slide shows some images of the existing single-family homes which front 1300 South. As far as site context, the site is surrounded by a mix of single-family residential, open space, and commercial zones. Sorry. Properties to the north across 1300 South are zoned R112,000 and contain single-family homes which are oriented towards Laird Way. Properties to the south and west are zoned MU3 and consist of restaurants, a gas station, office, and a hotel. Property to the east, across 2300 South, is a cemetery and is zoned open space. The site's also within close proximity to Foothill Drive and arterial transportation corridor, and within walking distance of a variety of amenities, including a bus stop, parks, open spaces, and Foothill Village Shopping Mall, which includes a grocery store. Here are some more context photos. The top three show the single-family properties directly north across 1300 South. The bottom left is a photo of the cemetery, just directly east, and then those last two show the adjacent commercial properties. Zoning map amendments are reviewed against standards of consideration located in Chapter 21A50, and staff found that the proposal complies with the standards with conditions. A detailed evaluation of the standards is provided in Attachment E of the Staff Report. Just to give you a brief overview of the MU3 zone, the purpose of the zone is to provide up to three to four-story moderately scaled commercial and mixed-use development adjacent to low-density residential neighborhoods. The zone allows for a mix of residential and commercial uses intended to provide neighborhood-serving uses and a mix of medium-density residential housing types. The standards of the zone are based on a range of building forms allowed in the zone, including a range of low and medium-density residential storefront and mixed use. The zone allows a maximum height of 35 feet. An additional five feet can be requested through the design review process. The setback open space and coverage requirements of the zone are more permissible in comparison to the R17,000 zone to allow for increased engagement and activation along the street, greater density, and to promote a more efficient use of space and utilities. The zone is also subject to design standards to facilitate development of smaller-scale structures that are compatible in scale with the surrounding development and patterns of the block. And modifications to the requirements are subject to the plan development or design review process. As far as plan implementation, the properties are within the East Bench Master Plan, within a community node, and on the fringe of the neighborhood's future land use area, where a variety of medium-density housing types and mix of neighborhood-serving uses are appropriate. The plan recognizes that the majority of the housing in the East Bench community is single-family, and identifies a need to provide a diverse mix of housing choices for all stages of life. So staff found the proposal is consistent with the master plan, and with staff recommendations, the proposal is also consistent with citywide plans, including Plan Salt Lake Housing SLC and Thriving in Place. As far as the community benefit, the applicant's proposing to dedicate 10% of the new for-sell housing units to those with incomes at 80% of the area median income for the community benefit. And staff finds that the proposed percentage of affordable housing units to be constructed on the properties is proportionate to the development potential and aligns with the affordability criteria established by the affordable housing incentives for homeownership developments in the MU3 zone. It should also be noted that the applicant has been coordinating with a community group that has a capital improvement program application in for review regarding public right-of-way improvements along 1300 South and the property frontages. The applicant has expressed interest in contributing several public right-of-way improvements identified in the application. However, at this time, the capital improvement program application is under review and has not been funded. Negotiations regarding the right-of-way improvements are preliminary and have not been finalized or included in staff's analysis of the project. The applicant may propose public right-of-way improvements in addition to the community benefit of providing affordable for-sell housing units during the City Council review of the petition. The details regarding the community benefit and affordable unit mix will be finalized during the City Council review of the community benefit and incorporated into a development agreement. As far as public input, staff received a number of public comments noting several concerns, primarily regarding parking and traffic, as well as neighborhood compatibility. So in response to the parking and traffic concerns, the applicant submitted a traffic study, which indicates a potential increase in density on the subject properties is anticipated to have little impact on the surrounding road. The study was reviewed by the Transportation Division, who confirmed the findings of the study and is recommending approval of the zoning map. As far as neighborhood compatibility, the properties are surrounded by a mix of uses and zones. The MU3 zone includes standards to facilitate The MU3 zone includes standards to facilitate development that is compatible with the surroundings. And the expansion of the MU3 zone to include three properties would allow the entire block to provide a more cohesive development at a moderate scale that would act as a transition to Foothill Drive. So staff is recommending approval of their request, and that several provisions be incorporated into a development agreement for the proposal. And I want to read through all of these, but they're related to securing the community benefit, mitigating the demolition of the existing housing units, and mitigating tenant displacement by requiring tenant relocation assistance be provided by the applicant. And the details of the development agreement will be finalized during the city council review of the petition. So that concludes my presentation, and the applicant's also in attendance and has a presentation as well.
Great, thank you. If we could have the applicant come up and discuss this item, you'll have 10 minutes to be able to give us your presentation.
Do you want me there or here?
Yeah, just come up to this front table. There's a couple of different mics here. Make sure the light is green when you click it. And then also, please speak your name into the record before you fully give your presentation. And then if your colleague is also going to speak at all, he's going to need to speak his name to the record.
All right, Joe Johnson, 1946 East Claiborne, Salt Lake City, Utah, for 106. Happy to be with you tonight. I think we're just queuing this up. A lot of this will just be a quick. Brooke did a, thank you Brooke, you did a very thorough report of what we've been working on for quite some time. But as Brooke mentioned, this project came before Planning Commission a few years ago, and Planning Commission recommended approval, and Brooke mentioned ultimately was tabled or denied by the city council, and at that time, the applicant was pursuing apartments. And that was well before we got involved, and so J Development, we took this project and this property, and we just, we've analyzed it a lot with a lot of people, and we wanted to come up with something that is cohesive to what Salt Lake City is wanting for progressive development in the city, walkable communities that are, as Brooke mentioned, you know, there's more than one product type for people to consider, and so we also know 1300 south, there's three older homes there right now, and we wanted to create something that is a gateway to St. Mary's and also an extension of the Harvard-Yale area. So, obviously, just a quick repeat, we've got three rundown homes that the property owner is considering, which, I don't own the property, the current property owner is considering redoing them, tearing them down, doing something, it just doesn't work, they're quite dilapidated at the moment, and so we just feel like creating a cohesive MU3 zone throughout this whole pie piece, which in turn looks like what's across the street at the Foothill, which is MU5. By a rezone, we would create a cohesive corner that mirrors the MU5 across the street, and putting a product type in there that works. We're not trying to put some high-rise in there, we want to put well-thought-out, living in this space of MU3, that's a corridor to up 1300, that just, that brings a sense of cohesion to the neighborhood. Okay, Matt? So, just real quick, three homes here that would come down, and there's a parking lot, and what obviously we're presenting is removing those three homes, keep going. And this is just a general site plan, and it started out at 31 units, and we're down to 26. We've created space in between all the units, there's great walking, there's a beautiful sidewalk behind the townhomes, there'll be places for yards, you can see all the parking is off-street, I know parking's a big deal, I know traffic's a big deal, we've heard and met with so many people about this, and we're trying to self-contain all of that underneath the buildings. And so I also want to mention right here on this, I can't really point here, but off 13th, there's an ingress and egress, and off Foothill, there's an ingress and egress, to help the flow of traffic, and you'll see the white arrows off of Foothill into the building, down on the south side, and then just above the Wendy's is an egress. This project will come with amenities in the condo building that the townhomes will share as well, and so when we've been talking with people, I've heard many times the phrase, we need a place to get people off the ladder, and what that was explained to me was, there's people that want to downsize, and they want to change homes but not zip codes. And Salt Lake City, as you guys know, everybody in this room knows, we can't go this way, we unfortunately have to reposition, regenerate, redevelop. Great opportunities in a vacant parking lot, and some old rundown homes feels like an incredible opportunity to repurpose a property and put something there that's beautiful, a beautiful gateway into the St. Mary's neighborhood. And so it gives, it gives an opportunity for people that are living in an oversized home but don't want to leave their shopping center, their bank teller, their dentist, all those people that are part of their community, and so this provides, again, speaking to the community benefit, A, it provides housing, and a different kind of housing that is becoming much more in vogue of not having to maintain a yard, shovel snow and all those things. This will be a great transitional period for people that need to, A, want that, or B, are relocating mom or dad and don't want to do it way outside the valley, but close. And so just a side-by-side of what's there versus what we're proposing on 1300 south as well as on 2300 east. Obviously, we know the Taggy's Fruit stand is super important to that area, and we haven't figured out how to work that into the building yet, but I wish we could, because I know that's super sensitive to a lot of people, but. So this is the 2300 east elevation. This is just a bird's eye view of what we feel like is a classy, well-designed, neighborhood-friendly. Again, I use the term "walkable," that's a term as a developer, you know, we're building, I build a lot of apartment buildings, and the parking requirements get smaller and smaller because we're forcing people to walk, and it's a great thing. And what's happened on 2100 south with the redesign of the road made it smaller, it's much more walkable, and we've met with some people in this room that that's important to them on 1300 south. I just want to say on the record, I recognize there's a lot of people that are sensitive to adding more cars and more traffic to a place, it's already, there's a lot of traffic, and we get that, and we can't fix the problem at the University of Utah, but creating something that is beautiful for a piece of real estate in this area that needs to be repurposed, we've put a lot of time and effort into this. So just a quick, some quick elevations, really quick, I'll just pop through these. These are the townhomes, this is the entry to the condo building. This is the entrance on the southwest part of the project. Before we even started, we met with Councilman Dugan, we've met with Anthony Wright, East Bench Community Council, we've met and talked with him multiple times, we had a meeting with the East Bench Community Council where we presented, we wanted people to hear our voice, this has been something we've tried to get out in front of and talk to people. We haven't been able to talk to everybody, but we've tried to talk to people and get people's feedback. Not everybody, but we've tried to meet with as many people as we can. I know Brooke mentioned, we met with John Lear, Laura Gaylord, and James Webster, and I'm super passionate about this because, you know, they made an effort to come sit at my office and say, we live in this neighborhood, and these are things that are important to us, and as a developer, I'm no stranger to a development agreement, which holds a developer accountable and responsible for certain things, and we want that in this project. I know, this is, I have a lot of friends in this neighborhood, and people I've known for many, many years, and it's, this is a super important, passionate project for me, and to participate with people to make 1300 south better is what we're after, to be part of a solution, not, you know, we're going to come in and do this and do it our way, and so we are willing to work with that capital improvement program to try to make 1300 south better, and if we can contribute and be a part of that solution, then we're 100% in on that. Real quick, just highlight, project highlights and the community benefits, providing, A, homeownership, these are not rentals, these are a place for people to own more homes, that's important for the cities to provide housing, we're providing the affordables, Brooke mentioned, obviously, work closely with the community councils on the CIP, and then we also talked about providing some type of identity as you come up 13 south with some type of monument or something, and we said, hey, we'd love to participate in that, put that at the beginning of the street, right at 13th, right before our entrance, as well as the corner of 23rd and 13th. So, again, just an additional community benefit to try and bring some cohesion to the neighborhood, we're all for that. Real quick, the traffic study was mentioned, Brooke mentioned that, so I don't need to go over that, we've provided that to transportation, I know that's a big deal, but really, we would be adding 2.4% of daily trips during the day, and I know that it feels like 26 units is going to change everything, but when you bring it, when you bring the metrics really into play, their summary was, this is anticipated to have little to no impact, or little impact on the surrounding roadways. Just real quick, to finalize, we have brought in what we feel is a really good professional team to make this project a success, and one of them is the Zwitt Construction Team across the street that's doing the Foothill project. Darren's a good friend, we've worked closely on this to this point, and then as well as Thomas Wright and the Kirkham Brothers with Summit and Sotheby's, they've been with us every step of the way on this, to talk to people, to talk about what types of units and residences will work for people that are aging down or want to live close to the university or in this area because they love this area. So that's all come into play, which will come down the road, this is a rezone, but there's a lot to do with the construction drawings to make this a win-win. Method Studio, you guys are familiar with, I know you just met with them a few weeks ago on a big project on South Temple, you're very familiar with their professionalism, they design a beautiful project, so they're an architect, and then we're J Development, and so we're excited about this project to make it a win-win for the city and the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll have you guys stay up here just for a second longer, and then staff, if you could jump up here so we can do clarifying questions really quick, would you mind speaking your name into the record really quick?
This button here, let's see. Matt Knight, Director at J Development.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so now is the time that commissioners have the opportunity to ask the team here any kind of clarifying questions, maybe things that might, other people in the audience might have preemptively. I'm just going to open up discussion for the commissioners, do you guys have any clarifying questions for the team here?
I have a question about the department review comments. A lot of them reference a rezone into community business instead of MU3 because that happened later, but did you revisit any of their comments based on the different, because it is, MU3 is different then?
Yeah, so when they changed their request to MU3, I rerouted it for department review comments, and some of them had, like, most of them didn't have any additional comments to add.
Okay.
Yeah, so those comments are up to date based on that change to MU3.
Thank you.
A few questions. What, do we know the current rental rate of the properties, the three, single-family homes?
So the applicant submits that data to the city, but it's not necessarily made public.
Okay.
But they can speak to that more.
And I guess the, the other question is, would a lease, or would a mortgage on that 80% AMI, on those three 80% AMI units, be equal to or greater than the current rental rate of the three, single?
Greater.
All right, thank you. So, I, then, yes, I have another question for city staff, which is, is it within the scope of the council's discretion in terms of a community benefit agreement to request something like seller financing or keeping the sale price of the three affordable units at the same rate as the current rental price in terms of mortgage?
So, that community benefit is ultimately determined by the city council, they have discretion over that.
But, but that would be something that we could recommend, and that the city council could actually proceed with?
If they so choose.
Thank you.
Hey, Brooke, can you, or management, find out how tall that hotel is currently? What's the height going on with that on the south? Or, yeah?
I don't have the height of that in front of me, but I believe that's three stories, and that was
Yeah, so I don't need the answer like immediately, but
I believe it's 30 feet. I'm pretty sure it's 30 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions? This is your primary opportunity to talk to the design team. We can ask questions later, but. Okay, we will now open to public comment, so for those in the audience, if you represent a community council, you will have five minutes, otherwise you will have two minutes. When you get up to the mic, please speak your name into the record, and we'll move forward. The public comment will be facilitated by the vice chair. All right, I will read out who will have up, as well as the next two people, so that you'll be ready to come up afterwards. So first, we will hear from Ralph GoHauer, Gaumhauer, I'm not sure what the pronunciation is, and then Jim Webster, and then James Moore. Oh, sorry, James Moore's going to just read this into the record, but. So the podium right there, behind you.
Right there.
Yep.
My name is Ralph Gawkner. I live at 2289 East 1300 South, and I've been there for 54 years. My concern is that I'm watching all of the traffic that comes down the street, we have an S curve there right by the mortuary, and my home is kitty-corner from where you're starting to planning to build those buildings. And my concern is, we've had many problems with that intersection, 23rd and 13th, especially at winter, when the road gets icy, and even though they plow it very quickly, it is still a problem, because if it's a cold night, it freezes over. Now, I have to tell you, in my many years, I've seen all kinds of things. The worst pileup we had that I remember was 11 cars, starting right at 23rd and going up always, and now every winter, we have a problem with people that try to turn from coming west on 13th South, that they want to turn on 23rd, and they're determined they're going to, regardless of the weather. Every year, we have a pileup of cars on the, right on the front of 23rd East, where these are planned going, and I've also seen over the years also seen, over the years, and this bothers me, because it appears that you're, we're moving closer to the sidewalk. We're not going to have the space that we've got. Like, right now, we've got about 20 feet back from the road where the homes are. And if they move forward, these accidents that occur are going to occur right on those homes in the corner.
Thanks. That's your time.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Jim Webster, and then Laura Kasted, and then Catherine Lindquist.
Yes, my name is Jim Webster. I'm on the Board of Yale Crest, so I assume I get a little bit extra time. But, I'm a landscape architect. I know Mike, and a few, and Amy, some of you that might be familiar with me. I think our concern, you know, the concern that really brought this to the attention of the community was the zone change from residential to an MU3. Currently, there's about a 35 to 40-foot setback of greenway. And that could potentially have been reduced to one foot or less. And fortunately, J-Development has conceded that that's inappropriate. So, they're not pursuing that idea. But that's what got a lot of people's attention. What we're, what we're really looking at is the historical designation of the California Trail, which came down from Donner Park, through the golf course, down 13th, and then through what is now Foothill Village and Curtis Park. And eventually, probably ended up somewhere around the First Encampment Park, we're not really sure. But our concern is that we have a unique opportunity, a one-time chance, to memorialize that trail on 1300 South. And it's, it happens to be coincident with the townhomes that are being proposed. And I also want to say, before I forget, that working with Brooke has been a real pleasure. She's really good at doing her job. The concerns that we have, and you'll hear about it from other members of the community, is traffic. And I think one of the things that we don't want to see repeated is the problem with Chick-fil-A on 21st South, where you have an enormous amount of stacking. And that particular site plan wasn't very well thought through. And so, that's the kind of a situation where we have ingress into the underground parking, which obviously, we, we love the idea of underground parking. But if that, if that is something that we don't have a lot of control over at this point, we're very, I guess, wary of the, of the problems that might be associated with that. And it affects what the state legislature, we, we met with Representative Nguyen, if you know Hong Nguyen, she's New Vietnamese girl, lady. And she, she's very interested in, with respect to the Olympics and so forth, in mitigating the problems associated with crossing Foothill. And so, we, we would want, would not want to jeopardize that situation by having inordinate stacking. Maybe that can be resolved down the road, but we're certainly aware of that problem. Foothill Village is really an interesting project, because I, I was the landscape architect for that project. And when we did Curtis Park, it was primarily a detention pond. But now, it's being opened to the public. And as you may know, and I'm sure Amy, you know this, that it is now opened up to the west, so that people can approach that project on foot. And so, we want to see a very strong commitment.
Thanks. That's your time.
What's that?
I said, thanks. That's your time.
My, my time is up?
Yeah.
Well, I thought I had more time, because I was the Chair of Yale Crest.
Yeah, we, we-
Oh, you did give me that? Okay.
You're the Chair.
Sorry, you're the Chair of the-
I'm on the Board. I'm representing the Chair.
I give you a little extra time.
Okay. Well, let's just make a couple, a couple more points. There's, there's some significant vegetation along that Tony Gilat, the Sea Forester, is very interested in preserving. And I think we have a good, solid working relationship with J-Development. We had a good meeting with them. The only sticking point is whether we have really resolved the, the question of stacking, as it is adjacent to Foothill Boulevard. And I think that's the primary concern that we may have still. And I'm sure that can be resolved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next, we'll hear from Laura Kasted, then Catherine Lindquist, and then John Lear.
My name is James Moore, and I live, my wife and I, live at 2253 East Laird Way. So, we're two houses away from 13th South. And my, I just have a couple of remarks. One is, we really appreciate the way we've been able to work with the, the developers on, on setbacks and so on. That's really helpful, from our standpoint. But I want to second the concerns that Ralph Gawkner talked about. The combination of an S curve right above the, where 23rd comes into 13th South. The combination of that S curve, and the fact that it starts going down, creates real dangers, particularly with bicycles. But cars, in, in the winter, it's a cars problem. In the summer, it's a bicycle problem. A lot of bicycles come down that, that hill, and, and accelerate when they get to the S curve. And if they're going really fast, and we're trying to cross the street, that's not a good combination. It, I, I'm not sure how to solve that problem. I merely, I don't have the expertise to suggest solutions. But I think it's really important to-
Thanks. That's your time.
Hard to look at that and see if you can slow down.
Thank you. That's, that's your time. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Laura Kasted, and then Catherine Lindquist, and then John Lear.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Laura Gaylord. I have a home on 1300 South, above Foothill. And I'm here to share a couple of the thoughts. Number one, the purpose of the capital improvement program is to help transform and enhance our community, which in, in addition to improve streets, widening walkways, and preserving existing trees, we would like to install historic landmarks to make our community aware of the historical significance of the California Trail. The 5,000-mile trail that forged the mass migration of countless pioneers and gold seekers during 1840 and the 1850s. The Cal, the California Trail, particularly the Salt Lake City cutoff, runs right through the community on 1300 South. The trail offers a unique opportunity for the East Bench and the St. Mary's area, in fostering community spirit and developing outdoor space, parks, and recreational facilities along the trail. Markers and activities can be developed to strengthen the community ties. It is more than a historical landmark. It's a vital part of our community, identity, and future. Number two, as it relates to the requested zoning change, a couple of points that need to be expressed, that we've heard here already tonight, and with other meetings in the CIP, the increased traffic volume. Most importantly, there is an ingress and egress openings into the newly proposed project. With those of us that have lived here for a substantial amount of time, and have experienced traffic flows and weather issues, this is the potential to be the biggest bottleneck for this new development. The East Bench and St. Mary's communities have a unique identity and must be preserved. The influx of traffic could detract from the area's charm and livability. By addressing ingress and egress strategically, we can maintain the community and character promote the vibrant. Thank you for your time tonight.
Next, we will hear from John, or, sorry, Catherine Lindquist? Yes.
Hello.
And then John Lear.
My name is Catherine Lindquist. I live on Laird Way, two doors away from 13th South. I've been there over 50 years, not quite as long as Ralph. I too would like to express gratitude to J-Development, because they have been willing to work with us. But I would like to emphasize that in my 50 years on that block, I've done a lot of walking up and down 13th South, and I've seen a lot of young mothers with baby buggies and strollers now. And a lot of kids going down to Clayton Junior High, a lot of kids returning home. It's a very busy sidewalk at certain times of the day. And even when it's quiet, there are a lot of people walking. So, safety is an issue, and I worry about the setback, because if there, if the sidewalk is too close to the road, that creates a very dangerous situation. But as Laura pointed out, this gives us an opportunity to identify, create an identity for the area. I, in my 50 years there, I didn't know about some of the landmarks. I was aware of St. Mary's School, but I think this is an opportunity for the people in that area to become connected to their place, in a very substantial way, that just living in a subdivision doesn't do. This is, this is a historic place, not just because of the Pioneer Trail, but because of the insane asylum. Utah's first insane asylum was just around the corner from us. And of course, St. Mary's was, was an important factor. But I think it's important for young people to know where they come from.
That's time. Thank you. And then, we'll hear from John Lear.
Thank you. I'll try to be as quick as possible. Here is a copy of the CIP. I'm not sure whether the staff or the Commission has it, so I'm happy to give it to you. There are three main objectives. The first and most important is to reduce traffic conflicts with pedestrians, bicycles, and other modes of transportation on 13th. That is our single concern. We, I would also like to express our collaboration with, our appreciation for the collaboration with JDIV. Their most recent rendering addresses our setback concerns. But we ultimately really need to focus in on the 13th South cuts. You've got one, two at, at now Chevron. And if you take a left turn, this would add another one 100 feet above that. So, if you're trying to make, go east, you're going to be stacking, 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 as various people try to make turns. That's our biggest concern. We think those areas need to be reduced, or eliminated, to the point that we find another alternative or partial alternative to ingress and egress into the project. We are not, are here to object to the zoning. The zoning is fine. And to answer a question you asked earlier, which only tells you how much of a busybody I've been over the last 30 years, the height of the hotel was to have been at 28 feet from the sidewalk. If you'll go out and look, it has sunk down about four and a half feet, so the building is probably, or five feet, the building is probably at about 35 feet. But off the sidewalk, the elevation is 28 feet as you're walking along 23rd. So, answering a question that was asked earlier, I'd have to go out and measure it again, but that was the agreement the community reached at that time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want that CIP grant to be in the public record? If so-
I would. Give it to Brooke or someone.
Yeah, if you want to, if, hand it to me, that would be best.
That's fine. There's a copy. We have much more material that goes with it, but now you have it.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did want to, I did want to add that the CIP application has actually been uploaded to the meeting materials as well. So, it was provided by the applicant prior to the meeting.
Cool. Thank you.
All right. I've gone through all the cards, so if there's anyone else who would like to speak on this topic, you can step up to the podium.
Thank you. I did submit a card, by the way. My name is David Leta. I'm here on behalf of the East Bench Community Council. I serve as the first Chair of that community council. The President or Chair could not be present tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of the East Bench. I also live in the area. I live on 1380 Chancellor Way, which is in the St. Mary's subdivision, straight up the hill, east of the proposed development. I'll keep my remarks brief. First and foremost, we have conducted meetings of the community council to ask residents how they feel about this particular development. I want to say very clearly, the residents and the council are not opposed to the development. We are not opposed to the development. We think this is an important enhancement to housing in the area, which does serve a need, and maybe fulfills a need. What we are opposed to is the developer's proposed traffic flow pattern. As you've heard tonight, traffic on 13th South is a problem. This is going to make the problem worse. The proposed ingress and egress on 13th South is what will cause further congestion. And remember, it's not only used by vehicles, passengers, bicyclists, pedestrians, but commercial vehicles also go up and down 13th. You'll see landscapers, you'll see cement trucks, you'll see delivery vehicles, all on 13th South. So, not just being a naysayer, what we're proposing is that this planning commission, if it approves the request, require that it be on a condition that they, our first choice would be to have ingress and egress on the south side of the proposed project, with ingress and egress from 23rd East, rather than from 13th South. But we do have a second alternative, which is if the developer insists on having underground access along 13th South, it be one-way access, ingress only, with an exit on the south side of the property. That would mean that there's much less congestion going east on 13th South, because you can only turn right into the project. And if you're leaving the underground parking, you can leave on 23rd, where you have multiple options to access Foothill Drive, which is primarily what residents are going to want to do. They're going to want to access Foothill Drive. You can go down 23rd, you can make a left on Foothill heading south. You can use the same intersection to make a right, because there's a curve there. You can make a right, and you can go north on Foothill Drive. Or, you can go through the parking lot, and go around the stores that are in the area, the gas station, and make a right-hand turn and go on Foothill Drive. So, this would, on our view, minimize the traffic problems on 13th South from this development. And we would ask that if you approve the request, you do so on the condition that access to the underground parking off 13th South be entry-only. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic? All right.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you all for your comments. Now, we will provide some time for your team to respond to some of the things that were talked about. I'm going to just give you a quick summation of some of the things that I heard, and so you can respond to some of those things. As you know, one of the big comments was on traffic, and so I'd love for you to discuss some of them. There were concerns about building too close to the street slash setback reductions. Donner Trail landmark, including that in the CIP, I'd love for you to talk about whether that's a possibility for your group. There were concerns about bikes, and the sidewalk width, with the new development. I'd love for you to discuss whether the CIP helps with that at all. Does the CIP address, like, sidewalk width or anything? And then, the last major comment was the egress, ingress, egress, whether you, what your thoughts are on that. Okay. So, those are the main things that I heard.
There was one other item. It was mentioned either two or three times, and it was the stacking issue problem on 23rd that, that was a, a current problem, but potentially could get worse.
Great. Yeah, thank you for reiterating.
Mr. Chair, just before we get into it with the applicants and the Commission, the zone is what the Commission is considering tonight. You don't have a design-
Certainly, yeah.
-or planned egress or ingress. And so, I would just keep that in mind following your discussion.
Yes, I, yeah, I agree. I'm partly hoping that for the audience that's here today, they might have some of their questions answered, but yes, for the commission, the zone change is what we are discussing. I appreciate that clarification.
And I appreciate that too as well. Thank you, Kelly, because we are, there's a lot to be decided on this, but I will tell the audience, first and foremost, when, the first thing we did was meet with Councilman Dugan, and he was the first one to tell us that traffic would be a hot button on this, on this project. So we were, we're well aware of that. The first thing we also did was tried to put a ingress, egress on 2300 East. And to meet Salt Lake City's requirements for a ramp down, it just, we worked with Method Studios over and over again to try to make that work, and it, we couldn't make it work. And so, so to speak to the ingress and egress on 1300, I don't see eliminating it, but what I can say, and I've said this to multiple people again and again, is we will have an HOA in this building. So there will be a homeowners association for these, for this property, this project, this development. And with that will come the ability to create restrictions on, on access points. We do have a secondary access onto Foothill that's really important, which is what makes this project in my mind work because we can funnel traffic out onto Foothill at the witching hours during the day when there are those quote-unquote pinch points. And I know people probably are shaking their head at a traffic study because there are people in this room that have lived on 13th, that currently live there. And I, they see it every day. They see the pileups, they see the stacking, they see the car accidents. And I'll, although I can't fix the, the traffic or, or the infrastructure issues of an S-curve, we have provided some ideas. And, and one of those ideas, as you can see on this, if those that can see this, I want everybody to know that this elevation is pre-CIP anything. So again, we're talking rezone tonight, but I wanted the people in attendance to see, you can see how far back the sidewalk is off of 1300 South. We have a very big setback before we hit the sidewalk because we wanted to make this a project that you could walk around and feel safe. So, I feel like that addresses that. As far as the stacking goes, I just want to read directly from Hell's Engineering Traffic Report. During peak hours, the project will add one vehicle every three to four minutes to the roadways. Now, I don't think it's fair to, to classify us as Chick-fil-A. That's a pretty, that's a pretty, like, we all have been at Chick-fil-A, and that 26 units is not going to be Chick-fil-A or In-N-Out. That's an engineer, that's not Joe Johnson or J. Development writing that. That's Hell's Engineering saying during peak hours, a car will come out onto the roads every three to four minutes. And so, what are we willing to do to, to make sure that the concerns are heard here tonight is we want to help control that by forcing our residents, you know, to Foothill in the morning or in the hours that 1300 South becomes that, those really pinch points. And again, it's rezoned tonight. We are willing to continue to meet with the council members here tonight. They've been great to work with, and we want to continue to work with them. And to Laura's point, yes, we have agreed that, you know, what we can do within our jurisdiction and with our budget constraints, we're going to, we're going to put our best foot forward on the CIP along 1300 South with, with some recognition of, of this Donner Trail and, and this neighborhood identity that they're searching for, that we are coming in, and the timing could be great to where it, it works for both parties. So, I think I touched on all those.
Yeah, I think that was, that was pretty good.
But the, the big one, I just want people to remember is this setback right here, we are not putting our sidewalk right up next to 1300 South. And as far as, as far as, you know, in the, the road conditions during the winter, that's outside of our control.
Okay. Thank you very much for responding to comments. We will now open it up to discussion primarily amongst the commission, but please stay here in case we have other clarifying questions for you.
Mr. Chair, can you please close the public hearing?
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. I do, I've done that a couple of times now, Amy. Okay, we are now closing the public hearing on this item. Now we will open the public forum. So, does the commission have comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And based on some of the public comments, I know I'm going to have a few questions. So for staff, I'm wondering, since we, and this is an important point, what's in our purview here is we are making a recommendation to the city council. We don't get to condition them or put limitations on them. We can suggest that the city council maybe look at this, look at that. That's really our role. Your role doesn't end here tonight. You move on to the city council, and they have much more broad authority in terms of their decision-making than we do. So, if we come back to the question of the rezone and then what we do have purview over. So, in an MU3, the setback is five feet from the property line.
Yes.
Okay. So, is there anything in the MU3 that prevents it from going further? Is it five feet solid? Because sometimes there's like, it can go from this to that. And as a follow-up to that, what, if, if this gets, if all of this parcel is an MU3, what would trigger this when the proposal is actually before you, that it came back to the commission as a design review?
Mm-hmm. So, that's correct, that the setback is five feet, and that's a hard setback for all of the building forms allowed in the zone. And so modifications to that would have to be requested through the plan development process.
Is that a minimum?
Yes, minimum.
So, so that would come back as the, the plan development process, the increase in setback, if they chose that. I'm just asking procedurally, not...
Yeah, if they want to reduce the minimum.
Gotcha. If they want to reduce the minimum.
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything that prevents them from going to like eight feet?
No.
Okay. And then, when, because we don't have, this isn't the proposed project, this is your concept, and there's nothing we can judge on that, what would trigger a project for this parcel in an MU3 zone to then trigger, well, I guess either a plan development or a design review?
Mm-hmm. So the zone has maximum lot width requirements, it has maximum building size requirements, and then maximum building length requirements. So if the applicant wants to request any modifications to those requirements, it would have to be requested through either the plan development or design review process.
Okay. So by right, they can go to 35 feet, five-foot setback with their lot, I think it was 110, right, feet for their lot width. So, I, I mean, I think the question for the commission too is something we always have to hit upon whenever we're looking at a rezone without a concrete plan, which is completely allowable, is what's allowed in that proposed zone, and is that appropriate for what we could see? And that's up to the commission to decide. But as far as congestion on this street, that is one of the standards in the planned, or in the zoning map amendment standard to a, of how, so that is something to consider of lessening congestion and safety on our streets and roads. But I just want to point, there is a correlation to that. It's not completely out of our purview. And then I would just ask the applicant, or, you know, or also address the, the community that transportation has that booklet of traffic calming measures, like if you want this, this, these are the things you could see on your street, and this is the give and take, like if you want speed bump, I'm making this up, but if you want speed bumps, you lose two on street parking stalls, something like that, so that the community then can really hone in on traffic calming measures that they feel are appropriate for their neighborhood, which I think in terms of safety, for all of the things that were addressed, there's plenty of things that transportation could do in that booklet to address that on 23rd and 13th South to make those more habitable. But that, that part is not something we can consider in our decision of if we think this rezone is appropriate. But traffic is to a point.
Thank you very much. Are there other commissioners that have thoughts?
Yeah, quick question. Given that drive-throughs were brought up, are drive-throughs permitted in the, in the MU3 district?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that whole question.
Given that drive-throughs were brought up.
Oh.
Are drive-throughs permitted in the MU3 district?
No.
Thank you.
This is, this is my neighborhood. This is my intersection. I've seen cars parked in the, you know, shrubs of the house that's there right now. Seen cars spin out trying to get up the hill. And those things really do exist. It's a lively neighborhood with, you know, kids and people doing stuff. It's really busy with bikers, and those are all things that make the neighborhood nice and reasons why more people should be able to live there, I think. And the fact that this is a mixed-use kind of corner, not corner, well, yeah, it's a mixed-use, that little triangle between Foothill and 23rd East is mixed-used right now. So it's a little anomalous to have three, you know, lots that are residential only and kind of like really low-density residential. So I think it kind of makes sense and matches the standards that we've been considering for this, for the entire area to be mixed-use. There is a, we can though get distracted by the things that we've seen so far, the drawings that we've seen so far, the plans that we've seen so far, because there's, there's a little bit, when it's rezoned, it's also tied to a community benefit. So they'll have a, a development agreement that says if you don't provide low-income or affordable housing on this spot and tenant relocation and that kind of stuff, that it can't be rezoned. You can't tear those houses down. But it also doesn't mean it has to be this. If it's rezoned, it could also be, it could be something else. It could be, there are a lot of things that are allowed in mixed-use that aren't allowed in residential. And I think that getting caught up in, you know, this, this proposal and these drawings and like getting your heart set on what this looks like right now is a mistake because when those things are, when it's rezoned, it kind of could be anything. You know, somebody else could buy the property and have a different community benefit, those kinds of things. But I think that it sounds like the city council is committed to there being affordable housing in this area of this neighborhood, and I, and I don't, I don't think this neighborhood argues against affordable housing and, you know, other units for sale and ownership and that kind of stuff. I think it's a, I'm really excited to hear about the community investment, the capital investment projects that's being headed up by the community. I love it when communities take, you know, make an effort to say, this is how our neighborhood could be better, and this is how we want money spent in our neighborhood, make this sidewalk safer and more, more enjoyable and more neighborhood-y. I love that. It's a, it's a, is it a weird neighborhood? A little bit, because only half of the, there's only a sidewalk on like half of all the streets. So this is like the only way that you can walk from Foothill up to 23rd, up to Wasatch. So, traffic is a, traffic is an issue that we already are kind of like dealing with, that I think that this rezone probably doesn't change very much. It seems weird that the traffic count was done on October of 2020 when none of the schools in Salt Lake City were in, were in, the hospitals were like full but like closed, you know, like, so the traffic count seems a little bit weird for Foothill, but, but I can see that even if there are 10 times as many housing units, if there will be than there are right now, because there's only three, even with 10 times more, the traffic doesn't get 10 times worse, because this is just three lots, just three houses with thousands of houses up the hill. Anyway, I think, I think that it, that I, you know, also took a moment to consider the other uses that are possible on mixed-use, understanding that affordability of housing is important to the city council, and they're the ones that are going to make the decision on this rezoning. And then also, if there's the time to like decide or say or require how, kind of like the property, how you move around in that property is during one of the, the following reviews that Commissioner Barry pointed out for us. But also, I appreciate you coming tonight and telling us what you think and sending your emails in. The city council will want to hear those things too. You can express that you are very concerned about ingress and egress on 13th South, and the city council is the place that can make that determination, that requirement for this rezoning. But it's a, it's a beautiful neighborhood. It's hilly, so saying how tall your building is going to be is kind of weird, and maybe that's why you can't have underground parking off 23rd East, because it's on a hill anyway. But I think this neighborhood likes new neighbors, so glad to see it.
Thank you for your comments directly as an insider in this neighborhood. Appreciate it. If other commissioners have comments, can we, can we direct them towards how this can, any modification to the way that we would like to approve or to start thinking towards a motion?
Yeah, I guess, you know, in line with my hobby horse, I, I'm a big, big fan of more housing. I think it's great. I do worry a little bit about the fact that, you know, we've been banging that we need more for-sale units drawn for so long, and yet here we are with an option to have for-sale units, and it ends up bypassing part of the thriving in place process by, by, instead of having a guarantee that the rent will remain the same or not increase substantially, which my understanding is that that is part of the thriving in place policy for rental units, it's just 80% AMI, which will increase the rent. So with that in mind, I would like to offer a motion if, if the chair will have it.
Quick point of clarity, reviewing what we're going to staff amendments, I think item one speaks to that, if I'm not mistaken. It's, it references the replacement rule, rules with ties in the rent to the replacement units, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken on that.
That replacement part is, is a, because if you're getting rid of housing, if you're demolishing housing, you have to replace the same amount of housing. So we don't have a net loss of housing, but it's not related to price of rent.
That's actually, if I could just jump in, it, it's twofold. So when you are displacing tenants, you have to pay for tenant relocation up to the amount stipulated in the code. You have to replace the unit, like-for-like, that's number of bedrooms, and then you either have to limit the rental rate, and you can do no more than a 3% increase annually for 20 years, or you pay into the city fund for housing at, there's a calculation in the code as well, and it's basically every month that you would have been obtaining rent up until you get a C of O. So there are two options. Either you stabilize that rent with no more than 3% annual increase for 20 years, or you pay into the city fund for housing.
That's the applicant's choice on which option they choose, correct?
That's correct, and it's up to city council to approve that.
Okay.
It's already written in the recommendation.
My understanding is that the recommendation, the recommendation for this, because, like just looking through this, because this housing would be for sale, that, right, option one is impossible, and option two, I did not see selected explicitly, was, was there something that I missed in the applicant material that the applicant explicitly stated that they would pursue option two?
So those were just staff recommendations, you know, regarding what is written in the code.
Okay.
The applicant can speak more to what their intentions are and what they may want to discuss with city council.
Okay. But ultimately, we are, we are permitted to make... But ultimately, we are permitted to make a recommendation to the city council that is, because they are the legislating body, they have the ability to go beyond the scope of the code, correct?
Correct.
Excellent.
I think it's appropriate, if you want to make a motion, to highlight the things you want them to look at.
Yes.
As suggestions related to thriving Salt Lake that perhaps weren't spelled out in staff recommendations, but are still in the plan.
All right. So based on the information presented and discussion, I move that the commission recommends that the city council adopt this request as recommended by staff with the following modification. Replace condition two as follows. A minimum of three housing units or 10% of all housing units, whichever is greater, constructed within the boundaries of the zoning map amendment shall be transmitted by the developer to residents by a bond for title or other arrangement that permits the new owner of the unit to have a monthly payment no more than 10% greater than each of the current rental rates for the demolished units. That furthermore, the current residents of the rental units located on the parcel be granted right of first refusal on said parcels, and that thereafter, these units be titled as affordable homeownership units for households earning at or below 80% of the area median income, AMI. The affordable units shall be comparable to the market rate units in terms of unit size and number of bedrooms.
Commissioner, we can't use that as a condition.
Okay.
We need a lot more specificity than what we just were given. And some of what you threw out there also would be illegal.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Do you want to just say, approve the recommendation with an "i", a suggestion that the council looks closely at this element? And then that might bring their attention to it? Or are you?
I would accept that for now, yes.
Okay.
I, okay.
Yeah.
I have one other. I'm sorry. And I agree with everything that was just talked about. But I see that we're talking about the project. So much of what was brought up by residents had to do with not a project problem, but a site problem of traffic in and around, you know, on 13th and on 23rd.
Sorry, give me just one second. We're in the middle of a motion, so I'd like to either, I would love to hear your thought, but I would love to maybe close out the middle.
And all I'm trying to do is to potentially modify the motion to include that there be additional study by the city concerning the stacking problem and the traffic issues that were brought up, right-in, right-out kind of issues that I really think are not, like I said, not project problems, but site problems that could be included in your motion.
Okay, so do you want to? Okay.
Yes.
Do we want to?
Nobody seconded, and also the motion that currently is on the table is illegal, so.
So do you want to rescind your motion?
I will rescind my motion.
Okay, great. Okay, do we have, considering the comments that you just said, do we have another motion that someone would like to make right now?
I'll take a stab at it. And I will address Commissioner Vela's comments in that. That, I think those are important topics, but they are not related to the zoning map amendment. Question, this site design is not part of the zoning map amendment standard that we can consider. So I think those are extremely important, and I think the community needs to take those up with the city council that do not have the limitations of the standards in the way that we do. I'm not downplaying any of that.
I would, oh, fair enough, fair enough. It's an issue that needs to be addressed, but maybe not by us.
It does, it's just not in this zoning map amendment context. So I'll take a stab at it. And I'll try to keep it simple. Based on the information presented and discussion, I move that the commission recommend that the city council adopt this request as recommended by staff with the additional suggestion that they review the components of thriving Salt Lake more clearly to make sure that they are all represented in this potential rezon.
I'll second that motion.
Great, we have a motion and we have a second. We will now have voting facilitated by staff.
Commissioner Vela.
Hi.
Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosenfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Levert.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Commissioner Burrows.
Yes.
And Commissioner Krasik.
Yes.
The motion passed unanimously.
Great. Thank you for discussing, and thank you, thank you all those who came to speak. Also, I appreciate that multiple people said that you had been working directly with them and been amenable to their thoughts. So that's not a comment we hear that often. So I appreciate you doing that. Appreciate it. Bye. We will now take a five-minute break and come back for this next proposal. We will jump into this next item. So if you're in the hall, please move a little further away from the door or take your seat. We will start with a presentation by staff.
All right. Thank you so much. Good evening, commissioners. I am Grant Amin. I will be representing the request for general plan amendment, zoning map amendment, and design review. I think it's kind of convenient that this application before, came before this one, because it sort of deals with sort of some of the same subjects. This project will also have a community benefit, tenant replacement, unit replacement, tenant displacement factor in it. This is a request for a general plan amendment, zoning map amendment, and design review at approximately 346 South, 800 East. This project is different from the last one that we heard in that it does include this design review portion. That means that we do have a building here that we are reviewing today, unlike the last one where the building was more theoretical at that stage. This one, we do have a building that is up for design review. With that, I will say that this one is also different in that the majority of the project, the majority of the land, is currently the requested zone. So the majority of the project can already be built under the existing zone. The question today is regarding those three properties in the upper right-hand corner that are not zoned MU5. They're the only properties on the block there that are not zoned MU5. And the request today is to bring those up to the MU5 zoning district. So again, there are three properties requesting that rezon, but five properties in total as a part of their approval. They will have to consolidate these properties eventually. The intent is a proposed development of 109 residential units. And there will also be commercial space as well, as well, excuse me, a mixed-use building. The subject property is currently in the RMF 35 Zone, requesting MU5. Staff has reviewed and found the project compliant with the requirements of the zoning ordinance and is therefore recommending approval with stipulations that I will get into. These are the subject properties as they exist currently, standing on 800 East, looking west. I will mention here that these properties are not within a historic district, a local historic district. They are in a national historic district. The reason for a focus on that local historic district designation is that demolition of these homes is not protected by a local historic district. The current owner of these homes can demolish these homes without going through that local historic district standard, and there's no standard for the national historic district. The photo on the right is looking down, looking west, down Linden Ave, which runs along the north edge of the property. Linden is a little bit unique, but it is a one-way public right-of-way. It's one-way, it's a little bit smaller than your average public right-of-way. This is the aerial view of all five properties, showing its location along the red line and its correlation to 800 East. You can see the former Pizza Hut there and that parking lot, and then the three residential properties in question. The first request is that zoning map amendment. The rezon impacts the first three properties. The existing zoning designation is residential multifamily 35. The proposed zoning district is MU5. The zone is different than, this zone is different than the RMF 35 because it allows a mix of residential and commercial units. It allows a maximum height of 55 feet, has more permissible setback and open space requirements, but also includes a higher threshold of design standards than the RMF 35 Zone. The total square footage of all three properties combined in the zone request is roughly 14,500 square feet. Under the current RMF zoning designation, which states 9,000 square feet for three units plus 2,000 square feet for each additional dwelling unit up to 11 units, indicates that only five units would be possible under the current zoning designation if these existing units were demolished, which they can do. Therefore, because seven units are existing, the zone permits less units than are existing. The proposed MU5 district does not have a minimum lot size requirement for starfront developments. The proposal would add roughly 40 units on the property that is currently RMF 35. Although only five units could be built now, this image below indicates sort of the volume of those five units compared to the old TSA Zone, which used to be before October 8th, and now the MU5 district. That's the first request. The second request is the general plan amendment. The applicable general plan is the central community plan, and it designates the properties as medium-density residential and medium-density transit-oriented development. The proposal would change the future land use map for the properties to a designation of high-density transit-oriented development. This request is consistent with citywide plans, which I will discuss shortly. Now we're at that community benefit that was discussed in this last item. In order to mitigate additional density, any rezon request requires the applicant to choose and outline a community benefit. This is a new ordinance that the city has adopted in response to our growing city. The applicant has chosen community benefit A, which is housing aligned with community needs. I will briefly discuss the community benefit, but the applicant is also here and can go into more detail of their plan to address this requirement. The project adds 109 units of infill transit-oriented housing. The project includes a broad unit-type mix, including two, three, and four-bedroom units, along with community-serving commercial space, including a publicly accessible gym. The project advances the general plan's goals for growth, housing variety, and multimodal transportation. Details for the community benefit will be finalized by city council, as we've been discussing, and secured through a development agreement at that time. Next, we have the requirements for unit replacement and tenant displacement, sort of a tongue twister. The biggest concern that was heard regarding this project over The biggest concern that was heard regarding this project over the multiple rounds of public engagement is that the project, or sorry, the biggest concern was regarding the project and its loss of the seven existing units. The zoning ordinance does address this concern, and the applicant has outlined a plan, which is included in the staff report, that indicates compliance with the requirements for demolished units and displaced tenants. The project will demolish seven units, five of which include existing tenants. The applicant has chosen to contribute to the city's housing fund for the loss of affordable housing, according to E.2. I didn't specify, but yes, these are, we're talking about rental units here. There's, we're not talking about for sale, as in the last case. Staff has found that the applicant's plan satisfies these requirements of the ordinance to replace existing units and provide full relocation assistance for all occupied units, including moving costs, fees, deposits, and rental assistance. But these final details will also be confirmed by city council and secured through a development agreement. Now, plan implementation. As mentioned earlier, the proposal does meet the goals outlined in the applicable planning documents, which are Plan Salt Lake, the Central Community Plan, the 400 South Transit-Oriented Development Plan, and Housing SLC. These plans indicate a strong desire for density and mixed use along existing transit corridors, including and sometimes especially 400 South. They also mention a desire for family-sized or multi-bedroom units. Notably, the project is within a quarter-mile of two fixed rail transit stops. It's actually a block away from two, the Trolley Station and the 900 East. Additionally, although there is no bus that goes along 800 East, traveling north and south, the 209 bus goes along 900 East and offers 15-minute service, which is UTA's fastest headway. Finally, the third request, design review. I wanted to take a look at the proposed building that is requesting design review, and then we'll get into the actual standards of design review. So here's the site plan for the building. Here is the proposed facade along 400 South, and then here's the proposed facade along 800 East. This proposal requires design review because it would exceed the maximum facade length in the proposed MU5, which is 200 feet. The proposed facade is approximately 273 feet. This request can only be approved if the applicant provides adequate design enhancements and complies with the design review considerations. Staff has shown in the staff report that the project complies and exceeds the requirements necessary to approve the request and appropriately mitigate the requested additional length. These enhancements include exceeding the required durable materials, glazing percentages, facade articulation, and massing requirements for the MU5 zoning district on each facade. Additionally, the project includes a 45-degree angle height transition onto Linden Ave. This standard is not required, but the applicant has included this design feature to help mitigate the impacts along Linden Ave. This project also includes vertical breaks, material changes, and massing changes as required by 21A.59, the design review. This project complies with A through L of the standards of design review. Additionally, over 80% of the ground floor will be used for active uses. Active uses in the MU5 zone include residential uses, but the building will also include 2,590 square foot, square feet of publicly accessible commercial space, including a gym, publicly accessible gym, and local business space. Here is just a list indicating the compliance and exceeding those design review standards. Staff has found that the project does comply with all of the standards of review listed here, the general plan amendments, the MU5 zoning standards, the zoning ordinance standards, and design review standards, and therefore, staff is recommending approval. As far as public input for the project, on August 4, 2025, the project was presented to the East Central Community Council meeting to a positive response. Since that meeting, concerns have been raised about tenant displacement and affordable unit demolition. Concerns indicate that the community benefit could go further to benefit the immediate community. The project, I wanted to say this, this is not the best place for it, but the project also exceeds parking requirements. Because the project's proximity to transit, the ordinance does not have a parking minimum. So parking is always brought up, and I did just want to state that as well. And finally, in terms of recommended motion, staff recommends forwarding a positive recommendation to the city council for both the general plan and zoning map amendment, with the details stipulated in the development agreement. And staff recommends approving the design review request with the condition that the design review approval is subject to the city council's approval of the zoning district and general plan amendments. And with that, thank you. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take questions. Also, the applicant is here as well.
Great. We'll have the applicant come forward and discuss the project. You'll have 10 minutes to give your presentation. I let the last one go a little long, so I'm hoping to be a little more consistent this time with myself.
We've got places to be, right?
Yep. Please speak each of your names into the mic. That would be great.
I will start. My name is Carla Lee. Hi, I'm with Elliott Work Group Architecture. We're architects on this project.
I'm Sean Thompson with Elliott Work Group as well.
I'm Hyrum Madsen. I'm the Vice President of Construction for Hardage Hospitality, the owner. I'll go first real quick and try to be brief because these guys are the pros at this. So I wanted to first and foremost thank the commission and staff and everybody that's here, and grateful to be here and the opportunity to present. We are here seeking a positive recommendation from commission to rezone the parcel and for the plan approval, as Grant pointed out, so that we can have a consolidated, aligned project that aligns with what's been going on along 4 South and what is also the rest of the block, to allow us to have a beautiful, cohesive, vibrant, viable, safe project. We're excited for it. We've been working on this for years, having lots of meetings with neighbors, central community, city council members. We've been working on this so long that there was a change at one point. UDOT, engineers, everybody to make sure that we deliver a special project that checks all the boxes and will be something that will be an asset to the community for decades. And I think it's important to make note that we were here a couple of years ago with a slightly different project and ultimately wasn't recommended to move forward with it. We heard you. We took that feedback, and we've incorporated it into this project now. And I say that to kind of let everybody know on the commission and those that are here, that's the type of owner we are. And so that's what I wanted to quickly talk about for two minutes, and I'll turn it over to them. Hardage Hospitality is not your merchant developer. We are a small company, family-owned, that was started by Sam Hardage in 1969. And over the last six decades, he's just developed some really nice legacy projects, and they own and operate them. Our little claim to fame is being the first residence-in hotel franchisee in the world. We built that in El Paso, Texas, and we still own and operate that today. Speaking of residence-in, some of you might remember the residence-in right next door to the project that we're talking about now. Hardage Hospitality built that in the 80s and operated it for 30 years. And it was during that time that, as the properties that we're talking about today became available, we acquired those, starting in the 2000s. And then the last one was the Pizza Hut around 2010, with the intent to redevelop it to something that was cohesive and a benefit to the community and played well and complemented the property next door. But the Pizza Hut had a 15-year lease still with several options to extend, and they were doing great. COVID hit. Pizza Hut came to us and said, "We're not doing great. We need help. We're upside down. Can you let us out of this lease?" And we didn't want to be those guys that strung them along and kept them on the hook, because it also allowed us the opportunity to redevelop this like we always intended and planned on doing. And then we've been working for the last five years to be back here tonight. But we've been here. We've got 40 years of history in Salt Lake City. I'm a Utah native, graduated from Alta High School and the University of Utah. This is my neighborhood. I have a condo here on South Temple. This is my district. So this is a legacy project for us. This isn't something that we're taking lightly. In fact, with the architect firm, one of the reasons why we chose them as well, not just for their talents as designers, but one of the principal owners of the firm actually lives in this neighborhood too, six blocks away. So again, it's a project that we take seriously and are very excited about and to present. So I wanted to share that with you, and I'll turn it over to them to kind of get into the nitty-gritty, but thank you.
Great. Appreciate that. So Grant did a spectacular job of stealing my thunder. So we're going to go through this probably at a fairly high rate of speed. We talked about the three parcels that are there. They were purchased and collected, and Hardage has maintained them, you know, hasn't renovated them, hasn't demoed them, with the intention of them being redeveloped at some point. We're still not sure how a pizza place next to a university can't stay in business. But to kind of give you the overview, and this is, we've been at this this long, that it was TSA UNT. We are looking to create a cohesive, to have cohesive zoning across the parcels. And the reason why this is important is that right now, if you look at the graphic on the left, that is the current zoning that is by rights. So with the MU5 on the south and the RMF 35 on the north. And the issue is, when we came and went, met with a lot of the departments, but the fire department in particular. So 800 East, ironically, is not wide enough for the ladder apparatus, believe it or not. The lanes get narrow enough when the boulevards are in play. Additionally, the southbound lane is too far from our building envelope, from our property line. So those two factors basically negate 800 East as being the access point for rooftop access for the fire department for firefighting. That then led us to go, okay, we actually have enough frontage on 400 South and Linden to meet that requirement. However, as you can appreciate with current events, you know, recent events down at White Horse and that, I think that was a pretty spectacular example of why rooftop access is crucial. The fire department is not going to allow us to have a building, a single building with multiple roof levels. So they wouldn't be able to access from the north, come across a 35-foot-high roof, and go up another roof to the higher building on the south, and vice versa. So that then would result in essentially a 55-foot, 56-foot-wide fire lane through the center of the parcels. Technically, you can do it. It leads to a very large driveway, which is not exactly the safest places to be. Granted, it's also, can potentially result in some loss of development parcels, obviously. But in reality, the bigger issue that we're concerned with, whoops, sorry, is just having a single cohesive approach to the parcels.
Let's talk about the footprint of the building. What you see in yellow is what we can build right now with the current zoning. And the magenta shows what we're asking for on those northern properties. I think this image was part of Grant's presentation, but again, the blue and the yellow is what's allowed, and the purple is what we're asking for, as well as the hatch red area. That's where the access that Sean was mentioning that we will lose if we have the access through that. We already went, we can skip this one. Grant went over this. On these slides, I, we just want to show you the mix of units we have here. We have from studios to four bedrooms. When we start developing this, we start with the studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. But we have been meeting with, with council and other departments, and we have heard them, and they ask us to look into family-sized units. Then that's why we came with that three-bedroom option. And then going over this review with Grant, he has mentioned that we needed to replace the units that were already on site, and there was a four-bedroom unit as part of those existing buildings. Then we have provided a four-bedroom to meet that requirement.
We'll skip through this. Yes, more density supports local businesses. The access, the vehicular access is in and off of, in and out on 800 East and 400 South. We have met with UDOT on the 400 South already. All of the service, all the garbage in that comes in off of 800 East, is all contained inside the building. There is an off-street delivery parking that we're providing up on the north side, as well as pedestrian access points per city requirements. Whoa, that was not what we wanted. Let's try that. Okay.
Okay. This is our basement level. We have 89 stalls within the building. The ground level shows on pink on the south side, the commercial areas we're proposing. But also what's important here is like, we have a unit on this ground level that is built into 400 South and Linden Avenue. We're trying to create that neighborhood interconnection and improve those areas and have them as a transition into that RMF 35 zone on the north side. Yeah, this is the second level. Just here, we want to show you that we're proposing a roof deck amenity. It's the portion that's with the number 13 there. We put them, put it there on purpose because we want to keep it away from Linden Avenue. That's the residential zone. And also, it neighbors directly with amenity area on the western property. Third and fourth level are the same, and on the roof level, we have an amenity as well on the corner to take advantage of the use there.
And it's also on the south side, again, away from the smaller residences. As was noted in your packet, we are coming for design review as well. We've taken very seriously the durability requirements, the glazing requirements, the open space and that. This is a little bit of a, of a unique entity in that this is an interior elevation, which technically has much lighter requirements by design, but that facade is so highly visible as you're traveling eastbound at 400 South, that it's in the client's interest, that they are a long-term holder, that they want to have a good, basically, front door to so many people that are driving up that direction. We are asking for variance on the building length. We've worked, our architect Dallas, who gets very passionate about this, we're working to basically break up the mass of the building through extensive, yeah, cohesive materials choices, and also an undulation in the facade. And so what we had kind of noted before was, this is that, that level up through on all floors, but on levels two through five, we have a 12-foot-wide by 32-foot-deep. Essentially, we took out a unit all the way up, and then it also had glazing along that hallway at that point. At grade, it is actually 24 feet wide to create something that we feel is in the spirit of the break in the facade, if not the exact letter of that. So that is what we are, we are hoping that you would take into consideration along there. Just because times, I'm just going to roll right through this. We are, one of the things we are actually serious about is the bike storage and actually helping reinforce transit. So many people, like up in the avenues, would write an e-bike down if they had a place that they knew that they could store it, that was secure and dry, and they would actually knew there was a place for it, and knew that their bike was there when we came back, thinking through some real things. The benefit, going from the Pizza Hut to this kind of a massing, again, the units at grade and having eyes on the street as we go along 800 East, transitioning as we go north, entries in the rooftop. And then this is actually looking south. That's Linden here on the right, and then looking south. But hopefully, you'll see that we've put a lot of effort into the articulation of that facade and trying to break down that mass. So with that, we welcome your, the next step.
Great. Thank you very much. Yeah, now we will do clarifying questions. Would you mind jumping over one seat so our planner can be, or one direction or the other? Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Thanks.
Are we graded on that?
I think you got an A on the moving seat, so I think you did great.
Moving, moving around here.
Okay, so now we will open up for clarifying questions from the commission, and we'll just jump right in.
I'll start. Grant, can you walk me through how staff
I'll start. Grant, can you walk me through how staff analyzes the articulation changes related to how, what satisfies staff about the articulation to warrant 100 and 273 feet in length?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. First of all, does it exist? There are examples of properties along 400 South that do not have articulation. I, I think that would be the main thing, and then other than that, I might yield to Kelsey.
Well, yeah, because I specifically want to understand how staff recommends approval of that amount of footage length difference based on just that they've had a facade articulation. Like, where is your line where you're like, that's sufficient, that's not?
Yeah, that's fair. With our, so we just adopted new design review standards, but our current design review standards speak to blank walls. Let me just pull this up, this section. So we don't have like a specific threshold of like, check the box, right? It's three feet, it's five feet. What we're going to be looking for is a change in materials, a change in any sort of like plane, right? So like movement, and then porch features, and then those kind of like pedestrian elements. So porticoes, storefront glass. Am I missing anything? Yeah, and so due to, I'm just looking at your elevation, thank you for pulling it up, and I can pull up the specific standard, but the amount of glazing and then the balconies that undulate, and then that pretty, I'm seeing three big pushbacks into this facade. We would, yeah, I can see the analysis of compliance with that standard.
So quickly, and maybe I misunderstood, did I hear that there are going to be several residential units on the ground floor?
Yes, yeah. They're accessible from the interior. They do have outdoor space.
Okay, so if, if I was reading the design review standards correctly, we need to have at least 80% of the ground floor taken by enhanced active uses in order to authorize. Is that correct?
So, great question. This is, this is a weird one that we have been looking at. So the enhanced ground floor applies to 400 South. What is enhanced ground floor? Enhanced ground floor, we can pull up the list, it's commercial, and they do have that. It's 100 feet from the corner, sort of west, so they exceed that requirement by having it all along that ground floor there. As a, for the entire building, it's just an active ground floor use. Our code was recently updated to include residential uses, as long as they have entrances on that ground floor to be included in an active ground floor use. Drive aisles, entrances for cars are not, are not included in that.
Essentially, an active ground floor use outside of an enhanced active ground floor use? Is anything other than parking on the ground floor? And so what we do when it's a residential use is we encourage those developers to add residential units along the ground floor. And then Commissioner Barry, I did find that code reference. It's 21A 5905OE, and it's one through three. And what we're looking for are building facades that exceed, this is specific to exceeding that maximum contiguous building length of 200 feet, shall include changes in vertical plane, so breaks in the facade, doesn't give a dimension, material changes, and massing changes. Repeat number one. Changes in vertical plane, so breaks in the facade in parentheses, material changes, and massing changes.
And I think the degree-
About the, further down, you said one through three, and there's a last piece under five that says, a building over 200 feet shall include necessary separation from property lines to impact, to minimize impact of shadows and development rights of adjacent properties?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, there are, there's a four and a five, and then a couple sentences after five. Commissioner Barry was asking specifically about material, like facade breaks.
Okay, I was just making, you said, I was just making sure that still applied as well.
Okay, additional questions. First of all, in terms of intended users, is this going to be primarily focused on a college market, a student market, or is it going to be primarily focused on a family market?
It'll be focused on young professionals, family market, housing for professors at the University of Utah. The intent is not for student housing, no.
Thank you. And then, I, I guess, I was a little bit confused, and my apologies if this is a little excessively in the weeds, about the discussion of the fire requirements. Is, is it the case that any building over a certain height has to have access to ladder trucks?
Sorry? Yes, and we need to have aerial access, but then it's also a matter of if we only, if we just develop the south parcels, the 400 South frontage alone is not enough footage, lineal footage, to meet that requirement. So it would have to be the south side of the building MU5 and the north side of the building MU5, combined would give us the required amount of lineal footage that we would have to meet that requirement. Does that make sense?
That does make sense that-
So the RMF 35 doesn't require it?
Yeah.
But it basically kind of gets sacrificed because it's a lower-density usage versus the MU5, and so-
I, I understand that, I just, it does seem like the, so in essence, it would not be possible to develop two buildings on this property under MU5? If, if theoretically that were a-
The fire department would very much, if you did, you would have that same 56-foot space between the two buildings.
That is interesting to hear, thank you.
And also to answer to your question, when a building is over 35 feet, you need that aerial access to your roof.
Understood, thank you.
Interesting's a word. But it's, it's, we understand, I mean, getting up there, and I wouldn't want to be on a roof that high if it was on fire.
And then, I guess-
May I stay on the fire point for a second?
Yeah.
Please. Okay, so I wanted to address that because you're saying that as zoned now, you don't have enough frontage access for a fire truck to, you don't have enough fire, you don't have fire access at all, 800, 800 East. You don't have enough frontage access on 400 to build a building at 35 feet or above.
Above the 35-foot, because then you're required to have the-
Right, so what you're asking us to do is to not have the 56-foot space in the middle, is to allow you to build the building completely down the block and zone the entire, that entire block of 800 East. And that way, you'll have enough frontage on the north side of the building to build this massive building that the fire department can't access from 800 East.
Essentially, yes. It's not the whole block, but it is those north three parcels.
So we're making the building bigger because we don't have enough frontage on 400 to access a smaller building with fire hazard? But if we make the building, if we give you access on Linden-
Linden.
Then you can access the northern fire hazard.
Basically from both sides, yes.
Okay.
It's, it's a matter of consistent, not-
Consistent, consistent route of access and down, down the entire 273 feet? That's what we're talking, right? I don't feel positively about that. I'm just, I just wanted to clarify that that's where we are. Making the building bigger so we have more fire access.
And I presume that there's a certain height at which, or is it a certain building style at which that roof access is no longer required if you use like, like basically skyscraper building standards?
Nope, it's all about height.
So it, there's like a medium band of height, basically?
It's once you go over 35 feet, you have to have rooftop access.
But, for example, a downtown skyscraper doesn't have rooftop access, correct?
I guess if you, if you're talking about going to like type 1A construction in a fire command center, yes, but that would not be financially viable.
Understood.
Candidly, yeah.
I think honestly, the, the graphic that you show under fire department coordination shows the three options. And, and I'm really, really pleased that you, you've gone to the fire department early to get this worked out so that this is it. And so it's just kind of an anomaly, you know, Commissioner, when, when, when you, you can do this, this, or this. When you do this, that, that matters. That's, that's what, what dictates. And you guys have already reviewed that with the, with the fire department and God it bless, so, you know, life is good.
I mean, I guess my concern is that, that, that seems like a paradoxical response, and obviously I defer to the professional judgment of the fire department, but it does seem a little bit frustrating that we are effectively creating what might not be the best outcome for our community in terms of massing because there's this particularly odd fire requirement. And so that, that would just be, I guess, maybe a concern to raise at a later time. Thanks. And then finally, I guess I would ask about parking. You are not required to have any parking in this building, and yet the choice has been to add a not insubstantial amount, 81, 81 spots, correct?
89 stalls.
89 stalls. Why?
Where would you like to have a lease at the place that has 89 stalls? Or the one OfficeMax that has substantially less for substantially more beds? It helps with turnover, and it keeps long-term renters there for long term. And a month of a unit sitting empty kills your profit for that for the whole year. So it keeps long-term retainage and-
Yeah, let, let me jump in here too, because this is my neighborhood. Parking in the street, it's a problem. And if we have people parking in the street, we're not being good neighbors, so we're trying to mitigate that.
Appreciate it, thank you. And then, sorry, one more. Reading through the department comments at the very end of the packet, there was a discussion by the transportation department about the fact that the load area is not sufficient size?
We actually, the updated, that's graphic is updated since we received comments back. The site plan won't keep going up. Yeah, there. The arrow, the, the chartreuse green arrows on the right addresses that concern off of Linden.
Okay, oh, so it's off Linden would be the load area?
Yes, yeah.
Excellent, thank you so much.
So in regards to the general plan amendment, the rest of that block is medium density. Is the main, is the reason for the high density just for the units per acre allowance?
Yeah, let me show you. There we go. So you could kind of make out, it's, in parentheses, it says 50 or more dwelling units per acre. That would be the case for this development. It would be over 50 units per acre, but I wasn't the one requesting it. If you guys have anything further you'd like to add. Just, just to be in line with the reality.
Yes, since the rest of the block is MU5, I was wondering how the rest of the block, which is MU5, but mid-dense, mid, medium density rather than high density, how that works if then there is that 50 unit per acre cap, but, or if it's purely based on the form, since we're switching to that kind of being the moderating factor?
It is an outdated community plan. It's slated to be updated in the next couple of years. And so some of what's on the ground doesn't necessarily match the existing density. But the applicants, from what Grant explained, has, they've chosen to update the future land use map in the central community plan so that it's all contiguous.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for that question. That's a reality that we, we deal with, so thank you.
I'm going to give one last chance for quick clarifying questions before opening the public hearing. Any last question? Okay, we will now open the public hearing. The public hearing will be facilitated by the vice chair. Please keep your comments to two minutes each unless you are the representative sent by the community council to, and that ought to be the chair. And then you will have five minutes to comment. So that will be facilitated by the vice chair.
All right, first, we will hear from Maha Barani, followed by Danielle Barant, followed by Mark Rex.
Hi, I just have some informal words.
If you could, sorry, say your name.
Maha, Maha Barani. I didn't see my submitted comments in the staff report. Contrary to page 74, this is not a community-endorsed development. I don't like the overreach and mission creep in this plan. It's more monolithic and, and more invasive projects than the 2023 proposal that had a negative staff report. And I'm questioning why this one has a positive staff report, but I was, I don't believe that deliberate property neglect should ever be rewarded with an upzone. There was a lot of process that went into determining that these parcels would be that zone, and I was a part of that process through the TOD process. I bought an even more derelict home on 324 South 800 East, and, and I was happy to fix it up. And they can always sell them. People will buy them. People will fix them up. And I'm also questioning who did the solar study on page 23 and 76 and 126. First of all, on page 76, it refers to a four-story structure, not the given five that I can see in the drawings. The winter solar map, I believe, is disingenuous. I don't see a noon nap, map, which will extend three houses up the street, at least 100 feet, at the darkest time of the year. The 3:00 PM map looks pretty accurate. It will reach over to the parking strip on the other side of the street. The 9:00 AM map, from what I can tell, will extend 163.4 feet to the northeast into the internal block, which is an SR3 designation, a single-story homes, and putting them in a huge shadow block. So it will probably even impact my property that faces onto Third South currently. It's a little hard to tell because it's as the crow flies, and, you know, I'm not that sophisticated. So that's kind of, I wanted to point out the solar thing because I don't think anybody else is talking about it. I have another property with solar on it. I spent almost $40,000 putting it in, and it's important for me to maintain my solar access. People, of course, you know, like to have their gardens and so forth, and just, it's really cold living in the shadow. Right now, we live next door to a 40-foot apartment building, which was our choice, and we knew it was there, but believe me, you feel it in the winter. It's just colder inside our house. You feel it. So it was set up that way for a reason. If they want to step their project back-
Thank you.
-from the neighborhood and take that into consideration, that would be great.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Danielle Barant, or Barani, and then Mark Rex, and then Cindy Cromer.
Hi, I forgot my glasses. This is the first time I've ever been here, so hopefully you can-
Sorry, can you just state your name real quick?
My name is Danielle Barani.
Thank you.
We are related. The first thing I would like to say is that I'm a 9/11 responder that worked at Ground Zero, so fire safety is very, very important to me. I've seen what happens when it, we don't need to remember any of that. You know, I have HardishHospitality.com pulled up here. Every single thing is a hotel. I'm unlimited time, so I won't list all of the hotels. I really appreciate that people think they live on our street, but you don't. We live on our street. And this affects us very directly. 800 East is a historic street. It was born in the early 1900s. My property with my ex-husband, Maha lives around the corner. She has the house next door to us. My children's great-great-great-grandparents lived in the very first house that you showed there. We are generationally there. Historically, my children's grandparents owned everything in Reeves Terrace on Linden Avenue. To say that we know this property and this area very well is an understatement. So we live in this area. We've been here for 30 years. We know it every, probably better than anyone in this room unless you live in our, in a one-block radius. I want to let you know that I'm curious how a fire assessment has been done when the city can't even get a snowplow down- city can't even get a snowplow down Linden Avenue. How can you get a fire truck down Linden Avenue for the access of that building when you can't even plow it? It's a huge safety concern. I feel like all of our safety concerns have not been met. I appreciate that they're addressing their own safety concerns, but what about the rest of us? We all remember the Malibu fires, so when you're going to take up Fire Hydrant One, Fire Hydrant Two, and Fire Hydrant Three for a high-rise, who's coming to save us? I really appreciate that we're talking about their property. What about the rest of us? And across the street? Was that my time?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Mark Rex, and then Cindy Cromer, and then Monica Hilding.
Hello, Mark Rex, and also live directly in that street area. My main concern is I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but it feels like this development is too big on the north end and that they were sort of putting down the older, older housing stock that was there and minimizing the importance of family and human interactions in those three property parcels. And I know a family who lives there and there's a direct community connection we have with these three historic properties, even if they're not considered historic in a local I'm also concerned that the Linden Street is too narrow to accommodate or that delivery vehicles and things like that will, at times, cause blockage on Linden Street. And I'm also additionally concerned about the height in those three parcel areas. And I think that these issues could have been better addressed than what we see in the current plan, despite that there are some poke-ins or something like that that we're calling them. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Cindy Cromer, and then Monica Hilding, and then Melinda Main.
I am gravely concerned about what I've just heard regarding the fire marshal. You have recommended, and the city council has approved and gone into effect on October eighth, a step down for buildings next to city register sites. I don't see how that benefit for historic properties survives with what I've just heard. So twenty years ago, I owned three twenty-four South, eight hundred East. It's a small, single-family home on this block. The neighborhood was the essence of the Bryant's community, a mix of owners and renters with significant reinvestment occurring on Reeves Terrace. I hope you looked at Reeves Terrace on Linden and the single-family residents on the corner of Linden and eight hundred East. Nothing on either side of the street was or is over two stories. The longest building is a triplex of townhouses on the west side, a triplex. The block remains the way it was twenty years ago today, except for the decay of the buildings owned by Hardage. They are dragging down the neighborhood. I hope you looked at the, the tar paper on the roofs. So some corrections regarding what you have before you. The block is in a national register district. I bought the map. Tax credits have been available for all of the buildings proposed for demolition since, for over twenty years, since the early two thousands. Materials proposed, I don't see them consistent with the buildings on eight hundred East. We don't have zebra striped buildings. I recall that Bree Shear talked about that. The project is not oriented to four hundred South. The longest facade and the entrance to parking are on eight hundred East. The abutting property on four hundred South may be zoned MU, but the existing buildings are only two stories. And interestingly enough, Hardage used to own that property, but sold it. We're back to the worthiness.
That's your time.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Monica Hilding, and then Melinda Main, and then Judy Ballantigue.
Hi, I'm Monica Hilding, and I'm representing East Central Community, so I have a five-minute time. Dear planning staff and planning commissioners, on behalf of East Central Community Council and its executive board, we respectfully oppose the proposed zoning amendment for three forty-six, three fifty, and three fifty-four South to rezone from MF thirty-five to MU five, as well as the requested general plan amendment from medium-density residential to high-density transit-oriented development. We also do not support demolition by neglect and believe it should not be incentivized or rewarded through rezoning. Our position is not anti-development. It is pro-responsibility, pro-stewardship, and pro-community. East Central has long supported development in the transit corridor and within East Central Community, including higher-density projects as appropriate, such as the former Office Max site, Ninth East and Fourth South, the former Village Inn site, Ninth East and Fourth South, the Row, one thirty South and Thirteenth East, Victory Heights Reuse Project, Eleventh East and One Hundred South. These projects honored the community, delivered community benefit, and respected neighborhood scale while adding much-needed housing. The application breaks the public trust in the TSA, in the TSA framing, planning framework. The TSA U N T designation here was carefully crafted during the 2012 process to serve as a transitional buffer between high-intensity transit development and historic, family-based housing. That planning, done property by property alongside the city, was rooted in stewardship, fairness, and predictability. It represented a covenant-level commitment between the city and the neighborhood. Approving this request would undermine the purpose and integrity of the 2012 adopted plan, erode public trust in our zoning tools and long-term planning commitments. Send a message that demolition by neglect is an acceptable development strategy, set precedent for eliminating naturally occurring affordable housing under the guise of transit-oriented development. Predictable land use expectations are essential for both residents and responsible developers who plan in good faith. Salt Lake City has invested heavily to ensure this corridor supports working families and with access to transit, schools, and major employment centers. Yet this proposal would remove existing naturally occurring affordable housing, eight units, replace family-supportive units with primarily market-rate, student-oriented units, three or four-bedroom units are not family-oriented as they tend to be rented as dorms, further accelerated displacement in East Central, reduce housing diversity along the corridor. Our community needs family and workforce housing, not another student-dominated development pattern. Transit corridors thrive best when they serve households of many types, including families, seniors, and essential workers. The existing three homes represent eight family-friendly, affordable units that could and should be preserved, sold, or restored, complemented by increased height on the adjacent vacant land as originally discussed. Density is not the enemy. Displacement is. We have always supported solutions that allow additional height on the open portion of this site. Retain and reinvest in existing homes, achieve profitability without erasing community fabric. The developer is requesting both demolition and additional height, a departure from the agreement and spirit of the plan. Responsible development is possible. We have seen it. We have supported it. We continue to welcome it. We respectfully ask the commission to uphold the 2012 TSA transitional intent, protect our naturally occurring affordable housing, reject efforts that reward demolition by neglect, reinforce predictability, fairness, and stewardship in planning decisions. Salt Lake City deserves development that builds a future for all, not only market-rate, student-oriented housing, but homes with working families can flourish.
That's time. Thank you. Next, we will hear from Melinda Main, and then Judy Ballantag, Tagway, Ballentine? I don't know. And then Jen Colby.
Hi, my name is Melinda Main. I live in the Bryant neighborhood where Eighth East is. I just live above Eighth East. I've been there for forty years, forty-plus. So I've seen Eighth East. Eighth East is not the kind of property that you build a monstrosity on. It's just, it's got the islands there and as the fire department has indicated, Linden Street is very small. It's tiny and the, and cars have to park there. I, I respectfully request that you deny the upzone, such as the planning commission did back in twenty-three, 2023. Thank you.
Next, Judy Ballantyne and Jen Colby.
Thank you. My name is Judy Ballantyne, and I live on eight hundred East in the block just north of the one we're considering. And I have the good fortune to live in one of those beautiful, old, early nineteen hundred houses, probably Edwardian, and people that is just like the ones that are proposed to be demolished, very similar. There are lots of people who walk in the neighborhood. It's a lovely neighborhood and people walk by my house and say it makes them happy. I have a garden in the front, but it's lovely. The houses that are planned to be demolished are beautiful, old houses. Just walking by them makes me happy. And I think that what is proposed is, in my mind, against producing ugliness instead of beauty. And also, nobody's building these antique houses anymore. They should be kept up. They should be kept in place. And when I look at this monstrosity.
That's your time.
That I hadn't seen it. It doesn't fit the neighborhood.
Thank you. Jen Colby.
Right, Jen Colby, resident of District Four and Bryant neighborhood. Please vote to send a negative recommendation to the city council on all three elements. Just two years ago, the commission gave a very similar plan a negative recommendation. There's no justification to make a positive one now. Arguably, this is a worse design, given the height and unbroken two-seventy-five-foot facade. Current rental market and real estate conditions make large luxury market-rate podium buildings out of sync with the actual missing housing in the city. I hear the newest podium buildings have high vacancy rates and are offering incentives, but not lower rents to tenants, and more are already in the pipeline. Jim Woods forecast of overbuilding is correct. The eight hundred East buildings are contributory, and contributory matters because the national historic district gives us all tax credits, and as we erode the district, we can lose the district. We are one of the lower-income neighborhoods. We are one of the densest neighborhoods. We are deeply misunderstood in the East Central neighborhood, and we have plenty of multifamily housing already. Other parts of the city can do their part and step up. This building is ugly. It's out of scale. It's out of form. It ruins the streetscape. To riff on Joni Mitchell, don't it always seem to go, you don't know what you've got till it's gone? They scraped neighborhoods and put up a podium. The owners should go back to the drawing board and design within the existing zoning. I support using the Pizza Hut and adjacent vacant lots and preserving the historic buildings. They should be able to do this. They've owned it long enough. They have substantial equity and could make a smaller, more attractive project pencil. In particular, the big category of community benefit makes the system look rigged. Community benefit, there's no analysis of net community cost and benefit. The real benefits are private, not community, windfall, return on investment, and inflated land values to longtime owner investors that drives up costs to all of us. They failed to maintain their properties, and demolition by neglect, I agree, should never be rewarded. Real estate is fungible. They can meet current zoning or just sell.
That's your time.
Please vote a negative recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the cards I have. If there's anyone else who would like to speak on this, you can step up to the podium. All right, thank you.
I will close the public comment. Now it is time to turn it over to the commission to discuss this item. Oh, I'm sorry, let me give you a moment to respond to some comments. I appreciate you. All right, so just a couple of things that I heard. I saw you guys both writing notes, maybe all three of you writing notes. So I'll just say a couple of things, not everything that was said. Concerns about bulk and height on the north end, and then just generally throughout, people were talking about that. Concerns about demolishing because of incentivizing neglect as a means to demolish solar was a comment. A lot of kind of, I think, thoughts and confusion about fire even with us. And then, yep, I think those are some of my main things, but I, I'll let you comment on your own. Take your time, but also consider the, the length of the evening, so.
Sure, absolutely. And again, thank you, everybody, for participating and taking the time to be here. That's, it's, this is great. This is what it's for. So some of those items, for example, the height, and I don't know if we can click back and forth, but that was taken into consideration. Linden Avenue kind of acts as a buffer between those homes north of there that everybody keeps mentioning. You have a line of sight issue that is not any worse than what it is today with the existing structure and trees and all those elements. So that was taken into consideration. Like I said, we are weighing and measuring all this stuff. We're trying to be good neighbors. Sean, you can jump in if you have any more to add to that, but that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Yeah, several people mentioned the prior application that we had, which was taller, but then also people were commenting about having people, houses right next door to tall structures. And that particular application, we didn't feel as responsible to have single-family homes next to a taller structure than what this was. This has a bigger buffer. It's a lower mass. And so we think that it's actually, based on that, it's actually a more humane approach to it than having a taller building right next to a single-family home.
And in addition, we're, we're not building to the setback on that north side.
No.
We, we've pulled the building off of that to take that into consideration and to understand that. And it's appreciated concern. The confusion about the fire apparatus and the fire lane and stuff like that, I think the comment was about a fire truck getting in there, being able to drive down Linden Avenue when it's such a narrow avenue and stuff like that. No, the, the intent with fire apparatus is that it's less than a hundred and fifty feet in, so the truck would be able to back, back out onto Eighth and, and go its way. So the intent is not for Linden Avenue to be the drive-through lane of a fire truck.
And, and just so everybody's aware, the east end of Linden is two lanes. It gets narrow at the northwest corner of our parcel, and then it narrows down. It's one-way at that point, yes.
So, so if that helps provide some clarity on that, but that again was something that was understood and weighed and measured as we met with the fire department and had several discussions with them.
If you guys could let them speak, please.
Yeah. And then I think the common, comment we heard was the demo by neglect. I want to be very clear that we started acquiring these properties in, in the year two thousand up to two thousand ten as they became available, right? It wasn't like we just came in and threw money at people and took them all at once. It was when people were ready to sell, we had discussions with them. These homes are seventy-five-plus years old. We acquired them twenty years ago. They, they were in a state that they're in now, and we've been maintaining them because the intent was to do a development, something complimentary again to the community and to the property that we had at that time, the hotel. So I get what they're saying, but that's, that's just not the case.
I would like to add, there was a comment about Linden not being wide enough to be a service road. What code reads, you need a ten-by-thirty-five stall within your property, and that's what we will provide. Delivery truck won't be sitting on Linden. It will be within our property.
You good? Okay. We will now close that response from, to public comments and open up for discussion amongst the commission. We are discussing whether to upzone and to the design review standards, so we'll try to keep a focus towards those kind of elements. Now opening to discussion, Amy.
I'll start again. I'll start us off. Okay. So I have.
So I have a few things to think about. One is the rezone request and the plan amendment request. So there's nothing in our purview that has any role in demolition. And I don't think anybody here would ever agree to demolition because a property owner has not maintained their property. But that, we have zero say in demolition. That's a permitting process that has nothing to do with this. So the current homes, if they wanted to demolish them, they would go through the process and do that now as well. So, well, I think that's something I agree that we don't want to reward that type of thing. It's just not anything we have a say in. So that said, if we're really talking about the appropriateness of a rezone, if we look at this block completely along Linden Avenue, the majority of it is already zoned MU5. And by right then, whoever owns that, those parcels can build up to 55 feet. And so really, the effects of rezoning these three is what's before us. And will an additional 15, 20 feet for that corner, subdue, or you know, keeping them at 35 feet, will that eliminate the impact of the rest of the block? And so I feel like the appropriateness of these three parcels being rezoned as MU5 doesn't add to the impact north because the, I don't know, I'm going to guess 95% of that block is already MU5 and those can be developed by right up to that height. I'm not negating that that would have an impact upon the north side of Linden Avenue, but it's already there. And so rezoning these three parcels, in my mind, doesn't, if we kept them at RMF 35, I don't think we would be reducing those impacts to the neighborhood at all. I, you know, I live in a 1920s house and older homes are great. We can obviously, I mean, I would love if we kept our older homes because I think that's a huge character building part of any neighborhood. But that is, again, completely not something we have any say in. Demolitions are nowhere near anything in what we do. So in regards to the zoning map amendment and the general plan amendment, I feel like that's what we make a recommendation to the city council feels that it meets all of those zoning standards or all of those standards in the map amendment for me. But if we move on to the design review, I have consternation about the 273 length because the intent of when we've allowed that amount of length to go through, we've looked at how we've broken up the massing. And I honestly, in my almost eight years, have not seen one project that successfully actually broke it up in a way that made it meaningful. So when all you're doing in the massing, the break articulation is a four-foot-wide opening for a pedestrian, that's not breaking up the mass for a pedestrian. And so, or did you say 12 feet here? So I feel like what that needs, though, is it's just going to be an open tunnel. What really will make this more of a break for pedestrians, which is the whole intent of why we limit it to 200 feet, right? Is because we want, we don't want it to feel like this monolithic block, is how you treat the ground. Make this like a courtyard. Make this something that then is an inviting break, right? Not just, I don't know if this is what you intend of like, you know, cars and vehicle access. This needs to have more treatment. And so for me to support that building length at 273 feet, this break needs to be treated differently and that's something we could discuss conditioning. It may be only me, but this is a big part of why we have a 200-foot-length break. And all of the buildings beyond that have yet to truly, when I see them built and go out to look at them, I am always like, well, that didn't work. So we need some better treatment on the ground of what the experience is for the pedestrian in this 12-foot break.
I want to say me too on the design review of the length of the building.
For me, I love more housing. I love family-sized more housing. Like this is, that part is awesome. I have some serious concerns about the massing, the length of the building. And frankly, right, like considering the project holistically, right? The choice we make while technically, like the, you know, because the first part of this is making a policy recommendation to the council, not just applying a rigorous standard, right? Like we are recommending a policy that will allow this entire project to be enacted. And as such, I, my sense, and I have not been here anywhere near as long as you, Commissioner Barry, so perhaps I am wrong. It is within our purview to consider the impact as a whole, which if this project goes forward, would include demolitions. Obviously, we do not have direct purview over demolitions. But because of the choice we make today, it may accelerate or alter the way in which the demolitions occur. You know, I have, I have deep concerns about the length and I think that I'm not sure I could actually genuinely say that we should do an administrative denial on the length limit. And so then it's a policy question. It's a policy recommendation. Should we be supporting something that's 272 feet long? Should we be recommending a zoning that would allow that to the council? And I, I am just not sure that this kind of structure, as much as I want this amount of housing, and is viable. And I would say on top of that, I'm really worried about the, what I've heard about the fire department. And so if I were to approve this, I would do it expressing my, again, policy concerns that, that we are, that if the fire code is constructed in such a way that a 270-foot building is the only way to make this pencil, right? That this single monolithic building, rather than a character of the street that pencils with multiple different buildings with the same number of units, then, then we have a conflict in policy between what the fire code is saying and what our planning code is saying. And that concerns me, although there's nothing specifically I can do of it. So I think that I am going to, in frustration, have to vote no on this rezoning, not because I don't want to see the height increase on that north side, but because I think considering this, this holistically, as a policy recommendation, this project does not have the thing that it needs to recommend it.
If I, if I may just clarify a couple of things that you said, Commissioner Rosenfeld. All of it is not policy. So you have three applications in front of you. You have a zoning map amendment, a general plan amendment, and then you have a design review.
Yes.
The two firsts that I named are legislative items. Those would be forwarded to city council with a recommendation of a development agreement for a community benefit, tenant displacement, all that stuff. The third is administrative.
Yes.
So you, the subject body, would be approving, denying, or tabling the design review conditioned upon the approval of those two legislative items.
Right.
And you're not rewriting policy for building length. The building length, they, they got into the application process prior to the code change. That is, that's an, it was an available request to exceed the building length through a design review. That was policy. So you're not rewriting policy by any means or making a policy consideration for city council. It would just be administrative to the planning commission, is that?
But the first two are legislative, which.
That's correct.
Like a.
Meaning a zoning change and a plan change. Yeah, so the city council has purview over those two requests, but not over the design review.
Right, but, but in terms of the zoning change, the recommendation we make to the council, is it, are we using our judgment as a body to make a recommendation as to what, what the council should decide based on our professional experience and life judgment and community embeddedness?
The recommendation should be based on the standards adopted in the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll just add very quickly to that. If you approve the, or if you recommend approval of the general plan amendment and zoning map amendment, they can build something very similar. It would just be limited to 200 feet in length. The design review portion, which like we're talking about is, does this building provide enough design standards, enough additional enhancements to mitigate the effects of that additional 273 feet? That's that third question.
Right, but that, so the administrative role that we play, the administrative function that we play is more constrained, has always been my understanding, than the legislative function. Is that correct?
The role of the administrative is for you to apply standards that are, that are set by the legislative body.
Yes. And so if, if, but in terms of the legislative role, and I.
You don't play the legislative role.
But we're recommending?
The, the city council plays the legislative role.
I understand that, but what.
You can make a recommendation to them, but the final legislative decision is with the city council.
I understand that. But are our recommendations prescribed in any way by the text of the statute? Are we limited to what we can consider in terms of legislative recommendations?
You are limited to the standards that the legislative body has created in your code.
Even when making a legislative recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, so hoping, could staff clarify for me? So this, the three parcels are for the rezone, but all five parcels are for the general plan amendment, correct? So it's, two of them are going from, are already MU5, but they're medium density and going to high density?
Yes.
So what does that change entail for that? Like, is it the dwelling units per acre requirements? Or is there, or is that just to kind of clean it up and make it, make it all the same? Okay. The, the concern I have is that I don't know that MU5 is really the right zone based on, based on the community plans. So if you, if you go into the central community, the 400 South livable communities thing, it talks about high-density TOD developments and it says that they should be, for buildings taller than five stories. So I think that high density is, is more high density than what we're talking about here and medium density is more, sorry.
I'm sorry. I feel like I'm talking a lot this evening. You're not wrong. The reason why you're seeing MU5 applied along the 4 South corridor is because the transition, the TSA transition zone was there previously. And as the, as part of the consolidation project, we did not increase development potential by more than maybe five feet here or there. We tried to keep it really the same. So that's why you see an MU5, a place along, a portion of 4 South, whereas some of those community plans might have called for something like an MU8 instead to maybe enable a 75-foot, 85-feet development. But we kept it all the same because we didn't want to increase that development potential. Does that clarify that, why it's MU5 and not an MU8 to implement that plan?
Yes, yeah, I, yeah, it's, I just, I'm pointing out that kind of differentiation in there that like, it seems like we're kind of right in that, in that spot, right in between. And so it's, it's, can be a question of whether it goes up or down. The other thing is, I just, something I do and I think that like, we as humans do, is like, we look at these maps and there's a corner that's a different color and we're like, oh, that should be the same color, right? I do that at least. And I, I think that that actually does a disservice when we're, when we look at it that simplistically. I looked, I kind of, in looking at the community plan overall, I looked at it larger and oftentimes it is these blocks within, this little corner is different. And that's because of that transition zone and that's because it's trying to shift down into something smaller next to it. And so I, I do worry a little bit about just making all of this block MU5 because I talked about this last time, but again, like, if you're standing down on the street and it's MU5 on one side and MU3 on the other side, those feel like two different places in the city. Whereas if it's MU3 on both sides, it feels like a little spot and it feels more like a community. I think that is, has value in community building and makes it feel more like a place rather than a border. And so I, I do have some hesitation about upzoning this to that because I think that that step down is intentional there, so.
I think that's an interesting kind of comment to bring in that, marrying the street beside, between the zonings at the corner. I think that's an interesting comment. Just to devil's advocate slightly, this is right in the area where there is access to transit and some of the best transit in the state. And allowing more density in the one place where people have a option to take the train or to walk around is something that's very appealing to me. And it would also support a lot of the zoning on the rest of the block and a lot, rest of the street. I am concerned about the, the length in that it is very large. And I echo the comment about there being a courtyard or something instead of the articulation is a driveway that's not pedestrian-friendly. So you have this, this space that doesn't invite human interaction. It inhibits human interaction and that people need to get over quickly in order to not get hit by a car. Or even if you're standing in front of a garage door that's going to open, you don't want to stand there that long because you don't know if there's going to be a car that needs to get in. So it feels like it is a, an attempt to follow the criteria that doesn't actually increase the, the human experience. So those are kind of two of my comments. I'm caught in a similar spot to you.
So I want to say a couple of things, but I'm also trying to not let my computer die because I have all a bunch of things put up on the screen. Starting in reverse order, from a design review standpoint, I would say from the, the impact of shadows, I think on Linden Street, conclusively, you can't do anything without creating a shadow that kills those properties north, on the north side of Linden Street. So I think it doesn't comply from that standpoint, from building length. And the only reason the building is extending that length is because they don't have proper fire access if they don't extend that length. They have to split up the building in the middle. So we're in this conundrum now where either we make a really long building or they have to split it in the building, in the middle, because it can't, 200 feet doesn't work because they still wouldn't have a northern access, right? And so we're in that spot and they will have to have a lot of setbacks and that design would be up to them. But I think from this standpoint, from a design review standpoint, it can't meet several of these things and I would say the amount if we need to from a, from a, from a making a motion standpoint, if we, if we get to that point. I'm still trying to figure out from a, let me speak to this more generally now because you made points to this. Yes, this is on 400 South. Yes, there is a train line that goes through there. But 400 South narrows at that point. 800 East is narrow. These are smaller streets for a reason because the character that. These are smaller streets for a reason, because the character of that neighborhood and housing on the, and that street is different. Yes, this is just like five other buildings on 400 South and one across the street in Liberty and, and the block and a bunch of other buildings down there, but those streets get wider down there, you're on a wider north-south street. This one is very narrow, it's a boulevard street, it's very different, and the fire, there's no fire access there. You have trouble having snow truck access there, and those are for reasons because large-scale buildings don't work on that block, it shouldn't work on that block. And everyone, different sizes, different densities, different styles of homes, um, deserve to have access to walkable transit as well, right? Every building doesn't have to be as big as possible, as wide as possible because it's next to a train, right? So I think, and I think the idea of, um, the proper word is the, is the medium-density transit-oriented development, I think that still makes sense, right? Still, you can still have something there that serves a, 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 some, some densities, the missing middle housing, some, something that's there that allows people to walk through the train, it doesn't have to be this. And I think we're stretching across three different things and trying to bend the fire rules to make this work, and I think it just doesn't work. And I've been sitting here for the last 30 minutes trying to cobble up the different things from different sections and pull together the recommendations to say it doesn't work.
So to clarify, are you suggesting that the general plan amendment remain medium density instead of high density? So, Grant, does that comport then with the MU5 zone?
We're making you guys work today.
I love Kelsey's face, she's like, more?
If you'll give me just a minute.
Yeah, 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 take a moment, so that's-
You mean in terms of units per acre, is that what you mean?
Say that again.
Do you mean in terms of units per acre specifically?
Well, if you're requesting a general plan amendment to go from medium to high density is, um, there's a reason for that. If, if we recommended not to do that because we think a medium density is the more appropriate to stay that way in the general plan amendment, is that presenting a problem for compatibility with, um, a zoning map amendment? Right? Are, are you suggesting a high-density change in the general, um, specifically to make those match? That's what I'm trying to get at. Is if, if we recommended leaving it medium density, what does that mean for-
Right.
-the rest of the process?
I think there would be an incongruence, yeah, great question. I think there would just be an incongruence between the units per acre then, if, uh, if it's not kept up with the MU5.
So it wouldn't necessarily present a, a big problem, is what I'm asking? That's where Kelsey may have to take some time to, or John can weigh in.
So there are, like, there are on that block other existing spots that are medium density and MU5. So that's, that's kind of what I was getting at when I was asking it.
I thought that's what you were getting at too, but then when he brought it up, I think that's, let's clarify that, so those questions are really, so we understand what the implications would be if we recommended a negative recommendation on the general plan amendment as well, and whatever we recommend on the other one as well, but what, what does that mean?
So the medium-density one is 10 to 50 units per acre, so it's actually pretty big range, and then high-density is 50 units per acre, um, or 50 plus. Um, I think one of the difficult things is our, and we're trying to work on this, but our land use designations on the future land use maps, they're not the same in every community, they're kind of all over the place. But, I mean, keeping in mind whether it's MU5 or MU4, you know, we don't restrict density, it's all about, can you, do you meet your setbacks, do you meet your height?
Right.
Can you park it? And whether that's MU5 or TSA or any of our other zones.
So then, Grant, does this proposed project require a general map amendment to go from medium to high density? Okay.
We're trying to do math over here, so-
Because the-
Understood.
The three parcels, there will be 42 units in the space that is currently the three parcels that are the RMF something, so as long as those are less than an acre, then it wouldn't require a... Sorry.
That's okay, I can't do math on demand either, so all the other people do it.
It's about a third of an acre, and this-
A third?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
For those three parcels.
For the three, yeah.
Yeah.
So then my question is if, can the proposed project, um, go forward with the general map amendment remaining in medium density? Or are, is that contingent, are they contingent upon each other?
It would be up to the council's discretion, I think. It's very close.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I'm just trying to understand the relationship of those things.
And one other thing to keep in mind too is, we're looking at all the adopted City Master Plans with those policies as well, given that this plan is from 2005, I think. Um, and so it is a little outdated, so we want to make sure that we're looking at, completely holistically, not just looking at the future land use map. Um, this one was very interesting, the central community, because most of it was based on what already existed, and that became the future land use map rather than planning or evolving some of these neighborhoods.
Remind me, re- re- really quick, if I could?
Oh, yes.
Um, I do want to point out here, it says medium-density residential, uh, 15 to 30 dwelling units. You'll remember that I, I said earlier, and it's actually, I think, just one slide above it, um, even though the, the plan says 15 to 30 units, under the existing RMF 35, they could build five. So there, there does exist that, you know, imbalance there already.
So we're, if I heard you correctly, Kelsey, you were saying that this came in before we changed the building length conversation, right? So, we're really stuck on the building length, um, as a commission, it seems like, and are we needing to assess the building length under the, the standard that it was?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, yes, I know.
But that standard is the one that you report, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, that was rhetorical for the, for the commission, um, which is, uh, are, are we too obsessed about what the, the current standard is and trying to get it into that 200 square feet? Or, and if not, then that's totally okay. I just want to make sure that we are in the same headspace of like, um, trying to figure out how to make sure this works. But to Commissioner Barry's comment, like, if it's not articulating, uh, the standards for that building, uh, length, uh-
Yeah, my comments are very much geared towards the requirement here, if you're going to exceed the building length to articulate the massing, that we're not articulating the massing in this project to the intent of why we do that. That we need better treatment of that break. To, to make this massing not feel so enormous along 8 East.
I was just going to say it's absolutely within your purview to give direction to the applicants and, and table the design review, if you feel more comfortable doing that.
I think we have two options, one is, um, condition it with very specific ideas of treatment or table it and with direction to the applicant to come up with something different, um, for it, but because we're not the final decision-makers on the legislative process, I think we still need to treat the design review as if it would go forward. If the city council denies the, uh, map amendment and general plan amendment, then, then the design review is mute. But if we don't address the parts of the design review now, the way we would anyway, then, if they approve it, then this goes forward.
Right.
So-
Yeah.
So if we have, this is a convoluted one for us, because we have multiple things happening that can change the, the landscape of the project, whether it goes forward or not, that are, that's out of our hands.
If we, if we table it, they'll be subject to the rules that they're subject to right now, and if we just say no, then they'll be subject, they'll have to do a new application, and it'll be subject to whatever the rules are when they do that.
That's correct, they could not.
Oh, I guess they could say no, yeah.
It feels like, it feels more fair to, I, I don't, I don't know, more fair, I don't know. It, it feels like tabling the design review, um, with a requirement to do a better job of meeting that condition E, um, in the design review rules, that seems like, um, the answer to me, and maybe, maybe they want to table the other parts too, to wait till that gets lined up so that we're sending the, you know, kind of like the whole package, looking at the whole package and sending it to the city council.
I-
I know they don't have to review the design review, but-
No, they wouldn't, that's us, we have, we're the defenders.
I know, but I'm just-
We could table it-
Separately?
Until the other parts go through the city council, but I don't know that, I mean, just kind of a little reverse of what you said.
And if I may, just interject real quickly, again, if we noted, understand, the courtyard idea that was thrown out, all that kind of stuff, I, I get it, and maybe we can move forward with that condition and understand that we need to rework and readdress that and get a little more specific, um, to keep going, totally understand that.
I'm not against trying to condition it in a way that the commission feels comfortable with. I don't know that, um, we've talked then about if the courtyard is what everybody thinks, like, no, that's great, like, I don't know that, that I've even come up with, um, ideas that we could specify in a condition that you all feel comfortable, because you, I just heard some people say like, yeah, I have a problem with the length. If we were going to condition it, then I would want to hear more, um, from commissioners if what I just threw out at that moment is satisfactory.
I, I don't think a condition will be enough for me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to specify a condition, I think that this is, right, it's not our job to try and literally design by committee, um, this building.
Correct, but I, I-
It's our job.
I guess my personal opinion is that I would, I would like to move forward, if possible, with a condition, and I don't think it has to be as specific as it needs to be a courtyard XYZ, I think if we are making the statement that the, I, I'm not entirely sure how to word it, Commissioner Barry is traditionally pretty good at this.
I think that that's true and a good point from you, but we do need to give sufficient direction to staff and the applicant if we're just going to keep moving it forward about what then would satisfy-
Totally, yeah.
That difference, um, from what's allowed to what they're asking for, that exception.
So I guess just a really quick survey from commissioners, uh, would you guys feel comfortable trying to hash out what the condition would be, or it sounds like we have two people that are, would prefer to defer, but what is the kind of feeling of the rest of you of conditioning versus deferment?
Go ahead, you can go first.
I, I would, I mean, to be honest, I, I believe I intend to vote to deny the amendments, or to recommend denial of the amendments.
Okay.
But at the same time, if the amendments were to, if the recommendation of the amendments were to pass, I would also recommend, I would also support just tabling the design review so that there can be a chance to hash it out more.
What, what else would you like to hash out?
The, so that the, the proponents can, can I, can identify a, a better approach, so we can provide general suggestions and guidelines and then they can come back to us.
For, for just the building length, or is there something else additionally you'd want them to address?
For the building length requirements, yes. Um, in terms of the, of the zoning amendments, I simply do not know if I am comfortable, given the, given what would be permitted with an MU5 zone of this size on this parcel, um, with making that recommend, making a positive recommendation.
Are there other commissioners that would like to weigh in?
This is what I was going to say, that, I mean, there's three things, you know, you've got the, the zoning map amendment, you've got the general plan amendment, laying those aside, then we have the design review. From what I've heard of, of fellow commissioners, there's, there's a significant problem with the length of this building. That's, that's it. There's, it's tall, and it's, and, and, and it's long. When, when I look at the, the east elevation, I think the applicant has made a genuine attempt to, to make it look like there's, there's five different buildings, there's different materials, there are different setbacks, I mean, everything that that, that shows there, there's, there's, there's balconies, uh, there's an opening on the ground floor to the point where, that you were making, walking across there, there's, there's some kind of break that happens. I think we would all like this building better. This is really a, a C-shaped building, three stories, sitting on a two-story podium, and this, excuse me, and the sea is facing west. If this was on the east side of the street, I think a lot of this long building, and it's not broken up, would be taken care of because it, you know, it would just, you know, it's, it's a shorter building, you know, with, with a cutout. So, I, I'm really torn, I, I think, looking up and down 4th South, uh, this is what's, what's been built over and over, this is what's going to be built across the street. You know, we, we had that case, you know, last, last time we were here. And it's, it's a long building facing 4th, uh, 4th South. So, I, i- if indeed we make a recommendation to, to council, to, to, to say something, to modify the design review, what is it that we're asking for? That, that we break up the east elevation? That we, you know, what specifics?
I would ask specifically that the 12-foot break that is designed specifically to increase the articulation, to satisfy the request for this building length, that, um, exceedance, um, have some pedestrian ground-level treatment that makes it inviting to a pedestrian, instead of a 12-foot break that's for cars. That's not the intent of limiting the buildings to 200 feet, was to increase that connection at the pedestrian level so it doesn't feel like this just like-
Fair enough.
So I'm specifically asking that the treatment from this 12-foot break, um, have a more pedestrian-focused treatment on the ground.
Can I make a motion?
Well, I don't know if anybody else wanted to speak to that, but yes.
I would make a motion to table all three things.
We have a motion on the table?
I second.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second, so-
So I, I would also say that we would, um, leave the public comment open, period open, and we would, um, come back when there's another, another iteration of a design review to see.
I would, uh, I would permit my second to cover that section as well.
Okay.
I would just note that you've already closed the public comment period, so you would need to reopen.
Yes. Okay. We, do you want to amend your motion to reopen the public comment period if it passes?
Yeah.
Okay. We will have voting facilitated by staff.
Commissioner Barry?
No.
Commissioner Burrows? Yes. Commissioner Leverett?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosenfeld?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
No.
Commissioner Vela?
No.
Commissioner Krasik?
No.
That motion failed four to three. Oh, I would like to make another motion, motion?
Okay.
I'm going to do the zoning map amendment first. Based on the information presented in the discussion, I move that the commission recommends that the city council adopt this request as recommended by staff.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, could, could you repeat your motion again, please?
Uh, it's, recommend that the city council adopt the request as recommended by staff.
For the first one, not all three.
For just the zoning plan amendment.
Okay.
I would, and I don't know-
Sorry, there's a motion on the table, so there's no discussion.
This is a friendly.
A friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to get it on the table, and you're, of course, welcome to deny it, so I would, ask that, or would recommend that the planning commission evaluate the possibility when considering this zoning map amendment of requiring that this building, that, that buildings in this specific area, I don't know exactly what that would look like, um, not, effectively that this building be split up into two. What, whatever, whatever zoning change, based on the professional judgment of the planners, would, wouldn't, would be able to do that, I would recommend that the city council consider that. that.
Do you accept this?
I'm going to say no to that as a friendly amendment.
Can you please clarify what it was that you were asking to have?
I suppose it would be consider an overlay that would limit the length of buildings in this particular area to 150 feet.
I'm going to say no as a friendly amendment.
All right, thank you.
You can make a substitute amendment, of course?
No, I'm just.
Substitute.
It's, it's on the record, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a second? Oh, we had a second. Voting will be facilitated by staff for this first motion.
Commissioner Vela? Commissioner Scott?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Rosenfeld?
No.
Commissioner Leverett?
No.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Burrows?
I know. Um, doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, right? It matters. So much.
Commissioner Krasik?
Yes.
That motion passed four to three.
Okay, I would make another motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Wait, let me make it.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
This is for the general plan amendment. Based on the information presented and the discussion, I move that the commission recommends that the city council, oh, let me start over. I move that the commission recommends the city council deny this request because evidence has not been presented that demonstrates the proposal complies with the following standard number, oh, consideration number three.
It is what? Oh, I'll second. Wait, sorry, point of clarification, are we talking about the length or are we talking about the general plan?
General plan amendment.
General plan, okay, thank you.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. The voting will be facilitated by staff.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Burrows?
Yes.
Commissioner Leverett? Commissioner Rosenfeld?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Vela?
Yes.
Commissioner Krasik?
No, for denial, yeah? No.
Yeah.
That motion passed six to one.
I'd like to make another motion for the design review. I'm going to make a motion to table this design review decision with direction to come back with a, another iteration of the design review that, yeah, that, that does a better job of meeting that 21A 59050 condition E.
I'll, I'll second, but can I give you a, a friendly amendment to clarify that a little better?
And can we also include that it opened the public comment period again?
Okay, so that specific direction that the applicant come back with a design that treats the break with more pedestrian focused treatment to satisfy the request for the additional building length.
Sure, yes.
And then if you want to also alter your motion to reopen the public comment.
Yes. Is that clear?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, it's clear to me. Okay, so we have a first, we have a second, voting will be facilitated by staff.
Commissioner Berry?
Sure, yes.
Commissioner Burrows?
Yes.
Commissioner Leverett?
I think I'm yes, yes.
Commissioner Rosenfeld?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Vela?
No.
Commissioner Krasik?
I will vote yes. I think that we potentially could have given a similar comment to have them be, have it be approved by staff, but I think it's fine to do it this way, just, it's fine.
The motion passed six to one.
Okay, well, that.
Hang on, we voted on the general plan amendment, we voted on the, the design review, we haven't voted on the zoning.
We voted, the first one was the zoning, the zoning was voted to approve.
Pardon me, okay, we did, I've got it in a different place, all right, sorry.
Okay, well, that concludes our agenda. Thank you for your time, thank you for coming and have a great evening.